Twenty-fourth meeting of the Tiverton Town Council order. Please rise to fledge and then please stand for a minute after resisting.
My host, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, living in a justiciable.
So I'm sure we've all seen the papers of the horrible tragedy in Bristol, Connecticut, with the police officers who were ambushed and killed. So if we could all stand a moment of silence in their behalf.
Thank you.
I'm Kirk.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Janik?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor Burke?
Here.
Counselor Viera?
Here.
Counselors Perry and Di Madiris are absent.
Okay. Our consent agenda. Approval of town council minutes for October 11th. Regular meeting. Counselor Viera abstains, absent. October 11th, 2022 exec session minutes. Counselor Viera absent, abstains. Knowledge receipt of reports. Treasurer Sorette. September 2022 budget and revenue reports. C acknowledge receipt of correspondence. A letter from Brayton Woods Homeowners Association regarding mitigating potential negative impacts to homeowners abutting industrial park development. Number two, AG Miranda letter regarding Bridle Way to be referred to administrator and solicitor. And number three, Town of Barrington resolution urging the Rhode Island General Assembly to recognize June 19th, Juneteenth National Independence Day as an official Rhode Island state holiday. And D, approval of tax assessor abatements of $810.50. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye, now raise your hand. Thank you. Enamnis. Moving on to public comments. I have three people who signed up. First, Gordon Craig, the president of Brayton Woods Homeowners Association. And Gordon, I have a colleague and a friend whose name is Craig Gordon. So if I say your last name first, please, I apologize.
Sixty percent of the people call me Craig Gordon throughout my life. That's the trouble with having two first names and two last names. Thank you, council members. I'll be brief with my comments. So in addition to the letter that we submitted, I just would like to expand a little bit more about our concerns. And I also want to go on record to say that so far, the representatives of North Point have been very professional. They've been open and communicative with us throughout the whole process. And we have reverted the same way. But I'm asking you to make sure that you consider Brayton Woods and all the owners in Brayton Woods as you continue to look at their applications, their permitting, construction, and ultimately, the impact that that development could have, especially since we are the only residential abutters to that property. Further, since the letter has been sent, it's been brought to my attention that there are several aspects of this proposed development that are in conflict with the 2018 Tiverton Comprehensive Plan. And I just want to point out three items in that plan. The first is Action 2A on that plan, which states that the 2018 Tiverton Comprehensive Community Plan would speak directly about industrial development and how allowed uses would be compatible with the environment, the surrounding area, the small-town character of Tiverton. Section 2B states, evaluate and consider rezoning in the industrial zone to lower-impact/higher-impact zones to minimize conflict between residential and industrial uses. And then Action 2C states, evaluation of industrial land within the Stafford Pond watershed and consider rezoning to ensure uses are compatible with and minimize risks to the drinking water supply. And it seems thus far, with what North Point development is proposing, does suggest some conflicts to that comprehensive plan, which was enacted by you back in 2018. So what we're requesting is that all these aspects that are contained in the letter are considered. And North Point, again, so far, has demonstrated that they are considerate of us. But we want to have, at the end of the day, no change to the impact of our quality of life and certainly our property values for all the 51 homes that are in the Brayton Woods Homeowners Association, as well as neighboring properties that are in Line Road, Ledger Lane, and around the high school. All that is going to be directly right in the vicinity of this entire development. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And do you guys have any questions for me?
Actually, it's public comments. I don't believe we're allowed to.
Okay.
Are we?
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Sally Black?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, town council. First of all, I'd like to thank you very much for trying to sell the industrial park. We know how long we've had that and how hard we've worked at it and how many different things we've looked at. I won't repeat. I was going to mention the comp plan because many of us sat together. We wrote it, we rewrote it, and we always talk about rural character. And we've had developments come to Sousa Road, we've had Big Ned and Copanato, we've had developments try to come to Fish Road. We had a gentleman come in this room that lives in town to try to put Big Box in the industrial park a few years ago, and he was asked to please leave because we were not interested in Big Box. So when I went to the library to look at this, full disclosure, I have two children that live there in that beautiful development. Their life savings are there. Just let me tell you one minute about that place. That is the most amazing neighborhood because you can walk to your elementary school, you can walk to your high school, and you can walk to your middle school because we put a path between the two. You never have to go out on Bogomash Road. My grandchildren took their bikes there, they walk there, talk about saving gas and everything else. It's idyllic. It's just an idyllic place to live. You have woods behind you, little things. So now, when I went into the library and I saw the renderings, I said to myself, I can't, this isn't Big Box. This is huge, out of control, all full of asphalt. And then the building, it was so ugly. And we always talk about abrevities and grass and different things and impervious, you know. So I said to them, I know you can probably do it by right, but it's never the wrong time to do the right thing for the people in Tiverton. And I would hope that all the people will come around and rally to this neighborhood. And the town council did too when we wanted those other developments, haring after haring after haring because it was going to hurt this or that or the other. There's a woman in here that even talked about the animals in the land that live there. So I just want you to please look at this very carefully. I know you will, and I trust you will because we vote for you so that you can defend us in these matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. And Susan Anderson?
Thank you. I wish to bring the attention of the public to the oldest house north of Route 24 in Tiverton, which is now being advertised to contractors as in need of a total rehab or tear it down and start new. The J. Russell Hicks House at 439 Main Road is listed in the Rhode Island Historic and Architectural Resources Preliminary Report of 1983 on page 73. It states, quote, "A two-and-a-half-story federal house with a large brick-center chimney and a central entry with a projecting dental work cornice in a five-bay facade. There is a fine granite block wall along the north side of the lot and stone walls along the south side of the house lot and along the road north and south of the house lot," end quote. Upon researching the original owner/builder of the house and the land evidence records and probate records, I discovered that the trustees of the colony sold the land to Samuel Hicks in 1732, indicating it was being ye north side of ye seventeenth share or great lot in Pecassett Purchase and is bounded westerly on ye salt water and to extend east or easterly one mile thenceforth and thence westerly until it make up the full quantity of 46 acres. Now Samuel Hicks purchased more land, increasing this acreage. I found several other early deeds with 75 acres mentioned in the area of this property. Samuel had a number of sons, according to his will of 1788. His widow was Susanna, who lived there, and he left the property and homestead on the western side of the road leading from Stone Bridge to Fall River, also known as Main Road, to his sons Thomas and Weston. He also owned property on the eastern side of the road and left that and the buildings to his other sons, Thomas, Samuel, Joseph, and Elihu. The 1854 map in the town hall shows J.R. Hicks as the owner, as does the 1870 map. The 1895 map shows Joseph R. Hicks. It's hard to pinpoint an exact date as to when the house was constructed since Samuel owned the property since 1732. I did find a deed where he left quarter part of the half part of the seventeenth great lot, 25 acres, to his son Samuel in 1771. So my guess is the house could be from 1735 or so. Obviously, it has been modified over the years because the Hicks have lived there well past the turn of the 20th century. You would have to get somebody from the public archaeology lab to review it and determine its original date of construction. The bottom line is that this house was built by Samuel Hicks in the early to mid 1700s, and I believe it is the oldest house north of 24. The next oldest is in the Osborne-Bennett National Register Historic District circa 1790. The state put their cursory date of the Hicks House as being in the federal period, 1775 to 1830. But be aware that when they created their preliminary report in 1983, they did not fact-check any deeds or probate records for any of the houses in the report. They went by architecture and old maps. This historic house has been in the Hicks family for generations and must not be demolished. If you look at the interior photos on Realtor websites, the original fireplace surrounds are wonderfully intact, as are the interior window frames. There's even a clawfoot tub. Being the oldest house in northern Tiverton and within a commercial zone, it qualifies for state historic tax credits if the building is to be used for income, such as an office or a use that doesn't require much parking space, one that doesn't surround the historic character of the building with impervious material. Our Comprehensive Plan states that the maintenance and preservation of the historic and architecturally significant residential buildings located throughout town is a concern. Both the state and the Tiverton Historic Preservation Advisory Board has deemed this as a historically significant property since it is on both lists. Action 1 of Element 6.1 of the Comp Plan states, quote, "Require as part of the local review process, owners and developers of historic properties to first consider and prioritize plans that include the preservation and appropriate restoration of existing historic structures over demolition when drafting and submitting redevelopment plans for local approval," end quote. When this property came before the planning board on July 12th of this year to present a concept where the entire property was razed and a new structure erected with 27 parking spaces surrounding it in its place, the planning board told the owner/solicitor to go back to the owner and reconsider the repurposing of the existing historic structure. Preserve Rhode Island also wrote a letter stating the same thing. Now it looks like the owner wants to sell the property to someone else and is advertising that it can be demolished against the statements of the planning board, Preserve Rhode Island, and the Comprehensive Plan. Please do not let the oldest house in north Tiverton be demolished. It needs to be kept alive using historic tax credits with a historic restoration contractor to preserve our historic character in the north part of town. The Historic Preservation Advisory Board's Historic Property Owners Guide lists this as well as other resources such as the Secretary of the Interior's rehabilitation standards for renovating and restoring these historical treasures of our town. Tiverton has been a nationally recognized Preserve America community since 2011. Let's keep it that way by preserving this pre-revolution piece of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Susan. Pass that over to Jeanie, please.
Good.
Okay. We're going to start with our public hearing on the approval, discussion and possible vote on the approval of the proposed amendments to the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 42, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 2, Open Burning, continued from 10/11/22. And Counselor Cook and the solicitor, we're going to do some work on it. So Donna?
Thank you, Counselor Burke. Yes. You will note that since the last meeting, there are other rearrangements and added verbiage. I wanted it to be able to last for a long time. So I spent time studying various ordinances on burning and added to what was already pretty good to try to make it a lot better. So in that, there were questions as to the last time, what was open burning? What did it mean? Cooking fire, recreational fire? So I added definitions that should help. One of the things that I had also added in that the solicitor had said in Section 1.7 of 4231 Penalty of Violation of Articles, I familiarized myself with that, and I had put it in part of this. It's not of the new one that was just sent out. But to try to familiarize you that was already in an article, and if you wanted to add anything else strictly for the burning ordinance so that it would clarify some issues. So we do have now definitions. You'll see it in blue. I'm sorry, people, we just got these, but it's colored now. And there's redded-out parts that are old language or we kind of, the last meeting, decided that we really wanted some changes. I also added in, and it was, thank you, Michael, for adding all the numbers because I didn't really know how to do that. He got a mess of A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and he quickly put it together for me, and I appreciate that. Burning permit required is, no person may engage in the open burning of any material with the exceptions of the following activities as permitted by the fire chief. Open burning of yard waste, brush, grass leaves, and other similar yard debris is allowed if there is written permit issued by an authorized representative of the fire department. No permits may be between April 1st and September 30th of any calendar year. The guidelines for the permit shall be set forth by the State Department of Environmental Management. The local fire chief, no more than six permits shall be issued to any one property in any calendar year. Second, a fire set in conjunction with production of agricultural commodities in their unmanufactured state on the premises of the farm operation. I believe I found that in either East Providence or Middletown, and I thought that that was important because we do have a lot of farms. Any fire set for the purposes of instructing personnel in firefighting with onsite supervision from the town fire department. That was pretty much already in our ordinance. A fire set to prevent or abate a fire hazard. A fire set for the prevention and control of disease and pests is new. I did see that, and I thought that was important. Bonfire or other ceremonial fire permit shall be issued at the discretion of the fire department. No holder of a permit for such a fire shall ignite the fire before it has been inspected by the fire chief or is designee, and no additional material shall be added to the fire subsequent to its inspection. Seven, all recreational fires shall be allowed without a permit except from March 15 to May 15. I believe we discussed that the last time, that that was a good time. Between the hours of 10:00 to 5:00 p.m., at all other times, a permit issued by the fire department shall be necessary. Recreational fire shall be under the supervision of a responsible adult and shall not emit smoke, which in the determination of the fire chief or his or her designee constitutes a nuisance to the neighboring properties. I think that was important to put in there because there was some pushback with having not being able to put any fires on Sunday. So I think personally that using the fire chief to come down or his designee to come down and go, is this a nuisance on a Sunday? And be able to have some control over if someone does complain, but allow the burning on the Sunday. The burning on the Sunday, when we come to, we'll see that has been deleted because I believe it was discussed in that manner. No permit shall be required for any cooking fire within the town. Location of fires, I believe that's already in our, the only thing that changed was the number. Attending open fires in local enforcement is new. Any open recreational bonfire or ceremonial fire shall be consistently attended by a competent person of at least 18 years of age. That became a source of who's competent. So I did find in one of the ordinances that they actually had 18 years of age, and I thought that that was important to put it in there. Such fires to be extinguished. This person shall have a garden hose connected to a water supply or other approved extinguishing equipment ready and available for use. This is new from another ordinance. I just thought it was great. So of course, it is up to the council to consider these options. Every person present at the scene of a recreational bonfire or ceremonial fire shall be subject and obedient to the orders of the firemen and police officers in all matters related to extinguishing the fire, removal and protection of persons and property endangered by fire, smoke, or water, freedom of fire department and medical personnel and equipment to perform their duties or to function properly, and the maintenance of order at or near the scene of the fire. It shall be unlawful for any person to disobey any such order of a fireman or police officer. Firemen and police officers shall have authority to arrest persons who disobey such orders and to hold them in custody until the fire has been extinguished, at which time the violator shall be dealt with according to the law. We had nothing in our ordinance to deal with disorderly conduct or to allow a person telling them that they had to actually listen to the firemen. The only thing that changed in conditions requiring extinguishing of fires, termination of permit, was the number and the added, number three, request of the Rhode Island State Department of Environment and Management. So the Rhode Island was added. Number five was added fire rating index, which was discussed the last time, so it's in this one. Next was contained burning without a permit. A lot of it was redded out, and the last time we discussed that was the same. What we did is, it was nice for the solicitor to put it in blue. So we already did have the burning of trash, household waste, construction debris, and material is prohibited, including the use of burn barrels, which we discussed last time, but now it's in here, not totally separate, and a similar container for such purpose or in any permitted fire as defined in Section 4233. Kindling of fire on land of another was already in our old ordinance, but of course, the number changes. Liability perempti, the number changed. New section, emergency events and situations. Is there more? In the event of a natural disaster such as a hurricane, flood, earthquake, or other similar events, the town administrator, after consultation with the fire chief, shall be allowed to waive any and all permits or burning prohibitions as contained in this article upon written notice to the town council. This is new. I thought it was important. You never know what's going to happen, and we needed to have that covered. On the first page, I don't think I read the definitions. Is it necessary?
No. You know, we all have this before.
Okay. And there it is, for your consideration.
Thank you. Mike, do you have anything to add before we open the public hearing?
No. So this was based, these changes were based upon the discussion that the council had at the last meeting. Donna, councilwoman provided me with some different provisions from different ordinances that we've kind of merged in. It did require basically a rewrite of the, rewrite and renumbering of the entire ordinance. So I'm interested in the public comment. The only thing, public hasn't really seen this yet because it is kind of almost a rewrite. So my recommendation would be to post it on the website again, and I know we have a new fire chief coming to, like him to weigh in on it as well. We did speak about that today. And then hopefully have a final passage at the next meeting, whenever that might be.
Okay.
That's my recommendation, but it's up to you.
Yep.
You certainly could adopt this tonight if you wanted to.
Any objection to me opening up the public hearing before?
No, I just had one question.
Okay. So there's an objection.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
Page three, under Section 4236, it says, firemen and police officers have the authority to arrest persons. Can firemen arrest persons?
By this ordinance, with the insistence of the police, but generally, fire people don't arrest people. But I think you got that from a different community, right? That was from a different?
Yes, allowed in other towns, yeah. It'd be a dangerous situation.
Good question.
That'd be interesting to see about the fire chief, how he feels about that.
Yep. Did you have something?
That was him.
They do not have arrest powers, so fire, they do not.
So I think they would be basically citing the code to create a violation they wouldn't be able to arrest.
But it does say that here, so we would have to?
Right. So should I wait?
It's up to you if you want to ask.
Okay, I'll just make one comment. It's a problem I have with the original ordinance and I continue to have with this. Section 42-35, no person shall contend, kindle, or maintain any fire or authorize any such fire to be kindled or maintained on any private or public land unless it's 50 feet away from any structure and adequate provision has been made to prevent the fire and/or smoke from spreading to within 50 feet of any structure. Living in north Tiverton, I could not have ever have any kind of fire in my backyard because I could not be 50 feet from my house or the neighbors.
That's current law. That's current language.
Which is what he said. He had.
That's the law that's on the books now.
There's a lot of people that are going to be in violation of this law.
Well, there's already been, there's already been a violation, but.
There's no way we can do this?
You can do anything you want, but that, just tell, you know, that's not new language. That's existing language.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
I didn't change it.
We could change it on that.
Of course.
Yeah.
Which is the purpose of the public hearing.
Correct.
So I'm not going to say what that distance should be, but it needs to be, I mean, for this, you couldn't have a hibachi with charcoal in it on your deck.
No, you could. That's a cooking fire. That's a cooking fire.
Fire. Oh, it's a cooking.
It's acceptable.
A fire pit, which could be the cooking or kumbaya, you couldn't have it. Most of us do.
I think that would be beneficial to when the fire department weighs in on it, especially with that language, but that's existing language. And frankly, they might not want fires within 50 feet in a densely area, densely, you know, densely packed area.
Here's your microphone.
Sorry. You know, and I don't know what the fire department would say, but from a safety perspective, they might want open fires in a community or a area of the town where there's houses that are close together for obvious reasons.
I was, I just went with what the language was because I figured we could have a discussion about how many feet because I was like, boy, that seems kind of far. I live in north Tiverton too. Whatever you guys want to do as far as how far you want it to be from something, I live close, near, very close to other people, and 50 feet's a lot, but I wasn't going to change it. I'm leaving it up to the council if you want it to be 25 feet, 35 feet. That's up to you.
All right. Thanks. Bill, before we go to public hearing, open the public hearing, do you want to say anything? All right. So I'm going to open up the-
You know, and I don't know what the fire department would say, but from a safety perspective, they might want open fires in a community or a area of the town where there's houses that are close together for obvious reasons.
I, I was, I just went with what the language was because I, I figured we could have a discussion about how many feet because I was like, boy, that seems kind of far. I live in North Tiverton too. Whatever you guys want to do as far as how far you want it to be from something, I live close, near, very close to other people, and 50 feet's a lot, but I, I wasn't going to change it. I'm leaving it up to council if you want it to be 25 feet, 35 feet. That's up to you.
All right, thanks. Bill, before we go to public hearing, open the public hearing, do you want to say anything? All right, so I'm going to open up the public hearing. If anybody from the public wishes to comment, please come up and state your name. I'm going to open up the public hearing. If anybody from the public wishes to comment, please come up and state your name. I'm going to put Danny on the spot and just say, are you good at judging distances?
No.
No? Okay. I'm trying to get a sense in this room what 50 feet would be.
It's closer than.
Oh, there you go, okay.
It's tiles.
I didn't think of that.
Two feet.
Public media.
Okay, so about 50 feet, okay.
About two feet.
Okay. All right, thank you. Hearing, no other comment. I'm going to close the public hearing, and just a couple things, and then I'll take other comments from the other counselors. So we did hear testimony or comments earlier in the summer when we were talking about burning on the beach, fires on the beach, and one of the concerns raised by some of the residents down there was that, that sometimes people have an open fire, which they're not supposed to have, but then they put a grill over it, and they put a hot dog on it, and they say they have a cooking fire, and it can't be, nothing can be done with it. So that's something, I don't know how we can address that, but I think that's a big issue with this. Okay, so that was answered, so, and, you know, hopefully our incoming fire chief can respond to this later, I'm not going to put you on the spot now, but it just seems, and or, you know, again, Danny, you're here, you're the fire marshal, so you may or may not. See, you're right, my line is like, I'm just curious, there's the no open burning of yard waste from April 1st through September 30th, and then there is all recreational files and fires, and I think the wording on this is a little confusing. All recreational fires shall be allowed without a permit except from March 15th to May 15th, between the hours of 10 to 5 p.m., 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. And part of the rationale that we heard last time at least opined was that, that's because that's, you know, high brush fire season. But I'm curious as to why that short window there, and then we have a different window from April 1st to, to May, September 30th, so just think about that, you don't have to comment today, but think about that when we come back to it, hopefully in two weeks. And why is it okay before 10 a.m. and after 5 p.m. but not okay? Why is it not okay, I guess? No. All recreational fires shall be allowed without a permit except from March 15th to May 15th, between the hours of 10 to 5. So between, the way I'm reading that is that on those dates, I can't have a recreational fire between those hours, but I can have one before and after those hours. See, so I think also the wording, I'm not sure if.
It's current language.
I know, but you see what I mean? Just some clarity, maybe it should be between the dates of March 15th and May 15th, all rec, um, all recreational.
That's actually in the original.
No, I know, I know.
I mean.
Yeah, I know, it's just.
And I, I didn't know what to do with it, it's.
So I'm looking.
I didn't change it because I wasn't asked to change it, so.
Right, I mean, just clarify.
Maybe clarification.
Exactly what it means, what it means.
I didn't know what to do with the dates or the times.
I knew I was going to speak out and rest off.
That's okay, you have your Tiverton fire.
Yeah, I was planning on speaking.
It is my understanding that the original burning ordinance, as it sits today, I think is identical to the Rhode Island D E M, and I think many, many moons ago, somebody just took that and put it there. So how all this came about, I have no idea. I need to speak on behalf of this, I've never seen it.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if the acting chief has, so if we kind of.
We'll get it to you.
Yeah, but I think that's how the original ordinance came into effect, how, because if you look up the Rhode Island D E M, word for word, item for item, ours is identical.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yes.
Well.
Unless D E M has changed it, but I've looked at it before, and it's literally from number to letter to everything is identical.
Yeah, and it's from 1967.
Welcome to our world. So if, whether, you know, if she wants to give it to the acting chief and, or the new chief and me, and we'll look at it before the next council meeting or what have you.
That'll be great, thanks.
Thank you. So we can post this revised one without having to take any special action?
Correct.
Okay, so, any other comments from the council? So, did I, did I close? Oh, I want to close the public hearing.
We can move it, so we're just going to continue this hearing.
And, oh yeah, I want to continue this hearing, I'd take motion to continue this hearing to our next agenda, next meeting, November 7th, 6th?
14th, 14.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Okay. I would do the 14th because there's still a possibility that Donna will not have been off the council by then, and if possible, I'd like her to still be on the council when we do it.
What are you going to do?
Well, still, still, you put, you brought it forward, so.
Thank you.
So continue this to November 14th, and I know we have other things too that night.
And we'll post it on.
And this new version will be posted on the website, and you will.
Definitely have them take a look at it.
Have the fire folks take a look at it, okay, thank you. Motion, or you made the motion?
I will.
Okay. Jay, Donna, you want to second that motion to continue?
Yeah, I'll second to continue.
Okay. Any further discussion, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Moving on to item 6B, that was removed by the applicant, so we're going to move on to our appointments, and I want to start with the.
So the licenses withdrawn, the request for the licenses withdrawn.
Our first is item 7A, Tiverton Housing Authority, it's a five-member board, five-year terms, one vacancy. The applicant is Sir Michael Linda, Sister, I'm sorry, Michael Linda Plant, 99 Hancock Street, requests a reappointment to expire October 15th of 2027. I don't believe Sister Michael Linda is here, so I think we just need to, so my understanding is Sister Michael Linda is not extremely mobile, which is part of the reason why she's not here, and she's also a resident of the housing authority, and by federal law, I don't know how many, but you have to have some residents as representatives on the housing authority.
State.
State law too.
At least one.
At least one. So I'd like to hear.
And there's a reappointment too.
It's a reappointment, although we have been asking that reappointments be here too. I'm asking whether or not we want to move this forward, knowing that Sister Michael Linda probably won't be able to show up here. It's, the housing authority meetings are at the housing authority, so it's easy for her to show up there.
She'd be able to show up at a later date?
My understanding, I didn't speak with her, but I don't, I don't believe she has.
She has mobility issues, so it would be difficult for her to come to attend a council meeting. The meetings are at the housing authority.
And so she can.
Yeah.
Get to those. Well.
It's a pleasure of the council.
I'll just make one comment, and it's, that's up to everybody else. So we do have policy now there where re-applicants and new applicants have to appear, but we can deviate from that on a case-by-case basis, and if we choose to do that, that's fine.
Well, this is for a disability, I mean, we have to make something for someone that's disabled. I mean, if she can't come here, but she wants to participate in the housing authority because it is there that they meet, I think it behooves us to be fair about this and let her do, participate in the town in some way, even though she's mobility issues.
So I would, I would add to that, Donna, I'm putting on my ADA coordinator hat for my other role, we would have to make an accommodation of some sort, so certainly this could be an accommodation. So does anybody object to us moving forward, we need a motion, because we'd also have to waive our other policy?
I think the motion that we waive the new policy requiring the applicant to appear.
So I don't think that's a written policy.
No. No.
Practice.
It's a governance problem.
Practice.
Is it in the government? No, no, it's just been our practice. So the motion is to waive that we.
Past practice.
Can.
The two-week, whatever.
Yeah, that we have to wait another meeting to hold.
So moved.
Okay.
You want to second?
Second.
I'm proud of Bill.
Bill.
I, I mean the motion, you want to second it?
Bill and Jay second, okay. Now, do I have a motion regarding Sister.
You can vote on that.
Oh, thank you. All those in favor of waiving? Okay. Motion regarding Sister Michael Linda's appointment.
Motion to appoint Sister Michael Linda Plant to the housing authority for one vacancy, reappointment to expire 10/15/2027.
Second.
Bill seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that passes. Juvenile hearing board, we have three, five-member board, two vacancies, three-year terms, and we have three applicants, so I'm going to call them in order that I have here. Constance Fleckenstein, 55 Cottage Avenue. Connie, if it's easier, okay. Thank you. And when you get settled, if you can pull that up close to you and just tell us why you're interested in serving on the juvenile hearing board.
Interested? Because I've never had a job I didn't like, and I liked being on the committees that I'm on. I started out as a hairstylist and worked for well over 10 years until I got into an automobile accident and I had to quit my job. Then I was fortunate enough to be eligible for a Pell Grant, so I went to Bristol Community College and I majored in criminal justice. From there, I went to Rhode Island College and got a degree in justice studies. And then while I was there, I worked as a security guard at Riverview Towers. And when I graduated, I got a job working with adolescents for the K program in Massachusetts. And from there, I went to Riverwood Mental Health and was there for like 17 years. And I've never gotten up in the morning saying, I hate to go to work.
Good. And I will.
And the same thing with the committees that I'm on, I hate to go and try, I've never said that.
No, thank you, and your background I think is, is wonderful for this. I'm very familiar with the K program because of my profession, and it's a, it's a great program that you work for, as well as Riverwood.
Yeah.
So I thank you. Does anybody have any questions for, do you prefer Connie or Constance?
Doesn't make any difference, I'll answer to her.
Okay. Deb?
I was just going to ask, how you've been on this, this, this is a reappointment, how long have you been on the juvenile hearing board?
Uh, let's see, I believe six years.
And you still love that job too?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Oh, I think I have one.
So, thank you, we're going to hear from the other applicants, and then we'll decide how we're going to move. We do have a decision to make because we have three people for two slots. Is Jean here? Jean Repose? Hey, Jean. Not the Jean I was thinking of. Go ahead, tell us why you're interested in reappointment.
Well, I've been on the board since 2009, 13 years. I've seen a lot of bad incidents, but the good part about it was the goods, I came out of it. It kept a lot of juveniles out of the judicial system, and I, and I really enjoy working with them and trying to help them out as much as we can. The five members plus the two now of the alternates, we've been working together with no problems. And that's about it. You know, if you want to know my past, retired firefighter, in 2000, I retired from the town here. I've just been keeping busy.
No, that's great, I think you were on, my wife was on, when you'd seen a Franklin, were you on?
Firefighter.
Yeah, yeah. So. On the board, not as a firefighter, on the juvenile hearing board, she would never be a firefighter. Any questions?
I would just like to say thank you for your service.
Thank you.
What kind of issues, what kind of struggles have you seen over the years, and is it something that's changing or getting worse or getting better? And it's something that the town can, can help with?
You really can't because it's all confidential, so you really can't come out and say, well, we should do this, you know, we keep it within our self, you know?
So every, every circumstances is different, is what you're saying?
Yeah, we interview, we have all the parents, all legal guardians coming with the juvenile, and we talk to them a little bit, and then we send the parents on, we'll bring the juvenile in and just talk to the juvenile and talk about their issues, and then he leaves, and the parents will come back. You know, we try to talk to the parents and see what we can do to help the child, you know? And then we bring back, or we'll, they'll leave, and we'll make a decision what's best for the child. Most of the time it's community service, you know? I mean, we did get a couple of people, you know, you're punishing me more than my child, well, what can you do, you know? That's about it, I mean, we keep everything within our self, we can't, you know, confidentiality stuff, especially juvenile.
Thank you. Anybody else?
13 years.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
And Nolan Robert Beatty of 10 Wild Rose Drive. Nolan, thank you. If you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested.
Sure. Yeah. Oops, geez. How's that? I've been a resident of Tiverton, I grew up here, and I'm 22 years old, and so a little bit younger than, than some of, some of the other people, but I've grown up here and I grew up with a lot of people who may have needed a bit, bit of a break in, who might need a little bit of guidance. I like to think that I have a, a good sense of judgment and character, and I think that there's a lot of unnecessary, or the, I should rephrase, I think there are a lot of things that can be avoided in the youth by simply giving them a little bit of guidance and maybe avoiding the entire process of court and going through these very long and cumbersome proceedings when the town has the resources and the character to, to help.
Questions?
I'll make the comment, I am very pleased and gratified to see a young person, not that old is bad, applying for a board or committee, because that's one of the things I've always thought we should do, try to attract the upcoming younger crowd to do these things.
And if I may make a comment to that, I, I, I agree, and I think that having a, somebody with, with another opinion, I don't think is a bad thing, and I think that generational swings certainly have an influence, and if somebody else can bring another judgment or another point of view, I think that that would be very beneficial.
Go ahead, Bill. Bill, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah.
No, Donna, hang on, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I have no.
So we have to choose the best qualified candidate, as you, as you can see here. I have two people who are experienced with this, with the procedures. I'm looking over your resume, I don't really see any kind of social work, any kind of experience that I would choose you over maybe other applicants, so tell me why, what experience or why I should choose you maybe over the other applicants, what experience or you may bring.
Yeah, sure. I, when I, when I was in school, I was very involved with the class and with the school and community, and I think that I was able to see and help a lot of people there, and I really enjoyed being able to help those certain people in my class and work with them and. and work with them and hear a little bit about what they're going through. And that was a unique experience because it's not something that a lot of people get to do. Once I graduated, I had still had an active role within the community, specifically with the school system. And I enjoyed being able to help people talk through some of the problems that they were having. Specifically, you're absolutely correct, I don't have any, any social work experience. I thought that it's being here, being, putting myself out there to be on a board would be, would be a good place to start.
Donna?
So, I take it that you've read what it, what it consists of, the juvenile hearing board?
Yes.
You're very close to the young people that come before this board, which is a, a great opportunity because you try to intervene before and try to make it so that they don't end up going, you know, to court. It's, it's a great program. And you want to help Tiverton. And it's like, I, I agree with Bill. We have very qualified people that have been on the board for a while. Have you considered any other? I'm just asking this. Have you considered any other board, like the planning board? Your young person might want to have a vision of where you want the town to go or make sure that the ordinances are followed through with a comprehensive plan. You might want to think about as a young person what you want to see in your future for your town. There are other boards that need people with a lot of insight and new ideas. So, I'll, I'll give you the same consideration as, as, as the other two. I'm just saying there are other boards to look at.
Certainly, if I may respond. I had, it was funny, I was reading this kind of times and that's when I had saw the, the position. And I had noticed there was quite a few vacancies. And, and planning, I believe there was one with trees. But I had researched what, what each sort of one had done and, and the board members on there. And upon research with the juvenile hearing board, that one interested me most. So, that, that I didn't want to sort of spread myself too thin. I found something that I enjoyed or thought I might enjoy, something that was of interest and, and that was why there was one of them.
But sometimes trying something new is a personal growth that you didn't see you had a talent for and you find that you do. So, I'm just saying that sometimes you can look in other areas and it also helps the town. Thank you for applying.
Did you have someone else?
Just based on your education and experience, you'd be a killer for our economics, economic committee. Not to say that...
No, no, no.
I would just...
I don't think we have an opening right now. So, Nolan, I too, I too want to commend you for coming forward for the same reason that Counselor Edwards mentioned. We are always trying to get younger people involved in town government. So, I very much appreciate that. And I, for one, and partly because of my background, I value the perspective of people who are closer in age to those who may be needing the service. And because we find that that's always a helpful perspective for us to listen to as professionals in my field. So, I don't discount you for that. I do encourage all three because we can only choose two. So, whoever the person is that is not chosen, I encourage you to look at other boards and commissions to be involved with. Because there are, there are plenty of seats that we need to fill and keep filled in town because our volunteers are how we operate. So, I'll, so first off, we have to decide if we want to do something tonight or wait until our next meeting. And if we want to do something tonight, we have to waive our policy.
I'm ready to do something tonight and I'll be willing to waive our policy.
Is that a motion?
Are we going individual by individual?
Well, I'm going to take motions. But first, we need a motion to waive the policy.
Motion to waive the policy of the two-week.
Any second? A motion to waive the two-week policy?
Regarding the reappoint, if we go with the reappointments.
Well, wait, is it just on those or?
I, I thought the policy was just for reappointments.
I honestly don't remember. We changed it so many times. I think we just waive the policy for in general.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to waive policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? I will suggest my discussion is, we want to think about this one. We have three people. We have a policy that gives us time to think it through. And I suggest we take the time. But I will, we have a motion to second any other discussion? All those in favor of waiving our policy and moving forward tonight? Donna and Bill? All those opposed? Okay. So, what that means is we'll come back in our next meeting and make a decision on who to appoint. So, we want to thank you all for coming. You can come next meeting. You don't have to because you've been here tonight, but certainly you can come if you like. Okay? So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Library Board of Trustees. It's a seven-member board, three terms, three-year terms, three vacancies and two people. Sanford Mantell, 80 Budway. Sanford? Hi, how are you?
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good.
Tell us about why you want to be reappointed.
Well, I've been on the board for the last couple of years and I've seen the improvements that the board, the library has made in becoming a community resource. And I've served as the treasurer and helped with a couple of reports to improve those. And I'd like to continue going forward, helping the director implement policies and procedures that can improve upon the library sustaining and maintaining itself as a community resource.
Thank you, Sanford.
I think it's important.
Any questions of Sanford?
Just a comment. You just really took that position and ran.
Thank you.
You really did.
Agreed. Anybody else? Bill, is your hand up?
No, sorry.
Sorry. And I would agree, you've been great on that board, Sanford. Very much appreciate it.
That was my one-minute elevator speech.
Good job.
It was good.
So, now you can, I don't think Chris will be upset if you stay there. Chris, would you like to come up? Christine Jackson? Ryan, I'm sorry. I don't know why I'm... I don't know either. 108 Driftwood Drive.
I don't.
I'm good.
Good.
I say ditto to whatever Sanford said. I've been on the board for three years now. I work, I'm there as a secretary. I was on the town council. I don't go into the budget committee meetings. And I thought for a while that the library might need some help. And I, I think the board right now is great. I think it's, they're doing a good job. We've got a great secretary, director, sorry. And we want to just keep it going. Because she still has some more work to do. She still has some more ideas. And it's just like, and she's got good support from the, from the board. So, I'd like to reappoint.
Any questions for Christine Ryan?
No question, just a comment. When our current director took over, things got a little rough. And we have some people on the library board now that work very well with her and assist her as much as they can. And they all have a vision and they all are on the same page. And I, I think that's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're both examples of people who've done a lot of different jobs, worn a lot of different hats in our town and then jumped onto the library board. It's something very new for both of you. And Catherine runs a great ship and it seems like it's very well-oiled at this point. And lots of changes, lots of growth. And you, you all have done such a great job.
Thank you. She has, too.
Yeah, she's...
She has.
Anybody else? I would echo those comments and I know why. I have a colleague named Christine Jackson. So, she doesn't look like you, though.
Okay, thanks for telling me that.
Do I have a motion to waive our policy?
Some moved.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor? Waiving the policy? Okay. Do I have a motion on these vacancies?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Sanford Mantell, 80 Budway to expire 10/15/2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Have any other motions on this board?
Make a motion to appoint, reappoint Christine Ryan, 108 Driftwood Drive to a term to expire 10/15/2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Okay, Harbor Management Commission. We have a nine-member board of two-year terms with one vacancy. Would Mr. Chris, I guess you go by Pine, of 395 Highland Road, if you're here? Oh, there you are, sir.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
So, if you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and your interests?
Sure. I'm a, most of my life resident of the town. I don't dare say lifelong resident of this town. It's, if you're not lifelong, you're not lifelong. My, my wife is lifelong resident. I am a, I've been in the marine and boating industry business for 20 years. I, I have not been for the past 12 years. But I worked for some of the larger, well-known marine and boat businesses, fairly locally, both Tiverton, Portsmouth and Bristol, a mix of them. So, I know, just very familiar with the marine business, waterfront in general. I think that finding a mix of proper waterfront access for residents, viable, proper waterfront businesses and waterfront residential areas is a, is a real challenge. I know there's a lot in front of the, with the, with the board now that's very challenging. And I'd like to be a part of it. I have, I, I, this would be, this would be the largest volunteer position I've done with the town. But I've done, I'm fairly long-term member of the Tiverton Land Trust and done some volunteer work for them. I'm a member of the Tiverton Yacht Club and I've done a fair amount of volunteer work for them. I'm a member of Amicable Church and I was on the Board of Trustees of Amicable Church for quite a few years. I've done many, I actually live right down the street here. So, I've done the, I kind of forget what we call ourselves, the Tiverton Liver Committee, Tiverton Trash Committee. And this is my area right here. This is where I clean up. It looks pretty clean.
Nice job.
Thank you. I, I'm also a friend, I know some members of the existing board. I'm a very long-term, good friend and colleague of their existing, the Vice Chair, Dave Stewart. He was the one that I talked to about this quite a while ago. He's sort of been encouraging me for years. He thought I could be a real asset to the board. So, I'd, I'd like to give back to this town. I love this town. I'm committed here to, I'm committed to living here the rest of my life. I'm a lifelong boater here in this town. I've had both power and sail. I've had boats in Naniquaket Pond, Standish Boatyard, Tiverton Yacht Club. So, I definitely know the area. I had a fairly unique introduction to the town. My family came here in 1972 because my father was a principal with Northeast Petroleum. And he, who, who, and any, I think most of you know who Northeast was. It's, it looks a lot different now than it did then. But it was, his original reason for coming here was to try to basically help Northeast Petroleum expand, potentially getting a refinery here in town. That's, that's why we moved here. And he essentially sided with Save the Bay and sided with the town and basically convinced his employer, Northeast Petroleum, not to build a refinery. So, it was, we really saw, I really saw, and I was a kid at the time, but I really saw the, like, why we came here. And I was all pro-refinery. And then saw, it, it was not the right thing for the town. And I'm really glad it's not here.
So are we.
I'm probably, I'm sure. I'm probably one of the few people that actually missed that tank farm because I worked there for summers when I was, you know, in high school and college. Anyway, but it, it looks a heck of a lot better now. I think that covers most of it. Again, I'm committed to living here. I'd like to give back to the town. I know the town well. I know a lot of the waterfront businesses. I actually know a lot of the waterfront residences, residents. A lot of those businesses that I, I worked for, I was either the, the sales manager, the general manager. So, I, one of which is quite large in town here. It's, they go by LRSC, but it's Lifecraft and Survival Equipment on Fish Road. I was the general manager there for 12 years. So, I have some business experience. I think that sort of covers my, my basis. I'm happy to answer any questions?
Any questions?
I just have one question. You look pretty good as a graduate from 1884, from Villanova.
Oh, my God. Yeah, thank you. Let's go. Let's go with 19, 1984.
I'm going to ask, thank you for applying.
Sure.
It looks like you're currently employed.
Correct.
So, they meet once or twice a month. I guess the standard question would be, would your employment prohibit you from attending meetings? I would assume not if you are making a commitment. But it, it, it's an obvious question.
Sure.
There's a lot going on right now.
Sure.
Should you miss 50%? If you think you're going to miss 50% of the meetings, that may be problematic.
Right. No. I, I, I work for Hood Dairy now. And admittedly, I, I used to travel a lot more, particularly before COVID. It's kind of amazing how much of that has changed. Some of which is just coming back. I don't travel internationally, but I travel a fair amount throughout the country. But it is now, now in a position where, number one, there's not as much travel. Number two, I can schedule it myself. I, I make my own schedule. So, I, I'll travel when I need to. And this would be a, I can't say this would be more important than my career, but this would be a priority. And I can easily adjust my schedule to be available for meetings.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Any other questions?
Just a comment. And you're friends with Mr. Stewart? You probably have talked to him about what's going on with the Harbor Commission now. And they've been working for the past year or so on the Harbor Plan. So, I know they've spent a lot of time. So, they would probably be looking for some, some input also on that plan.
I, I'd like to be a part of it. I, I haven't really spoken with Dave a lot of detail of, you know, of what the board is actually doing. A lot of my, I follow it online, I follow it with the Secana Times and I'll, Dave and I will always chat and he lives just down the street, too. So, I would, I would love to be a part of it. I'd love to help. I don't have a lot of knowledge of exactly what's happening with it right now. And I don't know if that's what, if you were asking.
No, I just wanted you to know that it, it's a big project.
Definitely.
And I don't know if you know how far they are with that, but they've, they've put a lot of time into that.
They have extra meetings and, yeah, it's a lot of extra meetings. They've, they've really worked really hard on it. So, it will require more time.
Yeah, Dave has mentioned several times, he, he's been on the board a long time. And he said, "This is probably the, the best, most active that the, the board has ever been." Great members, they're very, so another thing I'd, I'd like to be a part of.
They really have been. I would say over the last, they have been. Over the last year or year and a half, they've been very, very active and really doing extra meetings and putting that together.
10 years ago, I would not have had the time to do it. Now, I do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to call up Mr. Doctor Marco Paolo Dirks of 4240 Main Road. Welcome, Doctor. If you could tell us of your interest in...
So, I've been thinking about a number of years now to participate in town government and to be able to contribute. And when this Harbor Commission came up, that really piqued my interest. Although I'm professionally trained in orthopedic surgery, my big interest in my undergraduate focus is actually marine biology. And, and that continues to be an ongoing interest, although not professionally. And I'm also a... And I'm also an avid boater. I started sailing at age 15 at the community boating in the Charles River and been avid boater since. My wife and I took a sabbatical in 2006 and '07 to sail for a year around the North Atlantic for epic adventure and to break up the career. And, and so I have a pretty good understanding of what the boating community involves. And I think with my scientific background, I think interpreting complex scientific studies, I think I could be helpful in assisting in the project. So it'd really be a great honor to be part of the stewardship of such rich resource that we have here in interpreting.
Thank you. Donna, you have something?
Yes, there's many things on the table as far as the shoreline. We have Save Sapawat, the aquaculture, and where they want to place things is difficult for maybe people to get to the shoreline. It's always about having access to the shoreline. And the Constitution of Rhode Island says that it is our shoreline and it's supposed to be for us. So this seems to be, as we go along, more and more people that want to commercialize it. And I guess that's okay, but it's not when you can't use the shoreline anymore. So you have to be a steward of making sure people maintain their access to this wonderful thing that we have. Seem to want to commercialize everything, everything, basically. So you always got to keep your eye out for what's really happening, whether it's what you see at the horizon or your access to the beauty at your shoreline. So I'm very interested in that you've done something very different circumnavigating the North Atlantic. You seem to have very different skills than, than I've seen. And I'm interested in, in bringing different, different skills to the table for this group working so hard on the Harbor Master Plan. And I thank you for applying.
I have two questions. One comment is, we cannot waive the policy.
Correct.
Question from Madam Clerk.
I was going to get to that, Bill.
The application for Mr. Pine, it says, "Application Date, October 11th." And then Dr. Dirks is October the 14th. Does that mean Mr. Pine applied before Mr. Dirks, October 11th?
Bill, please stick more into the mic. They're having trouble hearing you over here.
I'm looking at the hot copies, 7D1, 7D2. Mr. Pine, "Application Date, October 11, 2022. Expiration Date, October 11, 2023."
Right, it's the date of a...
So, so Mr. Pine applied before, on October 11th, as opposed to Mr. Dirks. And a question for the doctor, same question. Orthopedic and Surgeon, I unfortunately know those very well. In your, out of Attleboro, from Tiverton to Attleboro. Same question in regards to your availability for their meetings.
Yeah, so the commission meets on Tuesdays, and that actually is a very good day. And I have a lot of control over my emergency room call, scheduled coverage, so that should be no problem at all.
Other questions? So I appreciate you coming forward. Our solicitor just clarified for us that we, our policy is that we can't waive it if there's more than, more than the number of applicants than there are seats. So we'll have to wait two weeks before we, because there's one seat open, two applicants. We'll have to wait two weeks before we can take action on this. But I want to thank both of you for coming forward, and we will be back at this in November 14th, right? So it's not two weeks, our next meeting. I shouldn't say two weeks because sometimes it's longer. And so our first meeting in November is November 14th. We'll have this back on. You're welcome to come to that. You don't have to. And we'll do it then. Yeah, Clint?
Good evening. I just wanted to make an observation. My name is Clint Clemmons, 451 Sapawat Avenue. I'm speaking as an individual, not a member of the Harbor Commission. But we clearly have two very qualified people here this evening. Would it be worthwhile pulling the commission itself and see perhaps somebody is interested in stepping down, but it hadn't really...
I leave that up to the commission to decide. I don't know if I can direct them which way, but if, you know, the commission wants them.
If it enters into the, into discussion.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. And you're walking very well.
Yes. It's good because we all have a nurse here tonight. So thank you both.
It's been an honor.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
And I'll also say to both of you, if, if, one of you won't make it on this commission, possibly unless Clint's idea is taken up. And we always have room for people in other committees and commissions, so feel free to look at those and, and consider those, depending on what happens here. So where did my agenda go? Moving on to Tax Assessment Board of Review. It's a three-member board. Terms are for three years. There are two vacancies. And we have one applicant for reappointment, Carol Gaimond of 37 Neck Road. Carol?
Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to apologize to the council. I don't know why, but I did not know my commitment was going to expire.
That's okay.
And I received an email from Jeannie just a couple of days ago. So I apologize that I did not get a resume together. Anyway, in light of that, I can fill in anything you'd like to know.
Just a little background.
I live at Neck Road in Tiverton. I moved to Tiverton in 1965. I lived in North Tiverton for 10 years and then moved to South Tiverton in '75. Raised my girls here. They went to Tiverton Public Schools. My husband was in business here, so was I. In 1978, I got my real estate license. Opened my own office in 1985. And then in 2016, I decided that I didn't want to be mommy anymore and sold it out. But I still keep my license with the same company. I've been in real estate now since 1978. I've been on the tax board before, Personnel, no, not Personnel, Appeal Board. I also was on the planning board for seven years. There's a lot that I have to contribute in terms of planning and zoning. Also, in just research, I've been in the town so long. Of course, I moved here and never looked back. Love the town.
No, you've been a, you've added much value to the town over the years. Carol?
I've always tried to contribute. When the kids were in school, I volunteered all the time. I also was a board member of the Community Club, Young Ones Community Club. I'm probably unaware of that one. It's an oldie but goodie, like me. I was the president at one time. And then I went to work. Haven't stopped since.
Great. Questions for Carol?
I just said I admire your energy.
Not a question, a comment. I'm particularly impressed with the idea that you've been on the planning board and the tax appeal board, which dovetails, dovetails very nicely with this one.
Yes, it does. I also like working with Dave Roberts. He's so competent. Does his research. He's very good to work with. I can't say enough about him.
So I will, to move this forward tonight, we'd need to waive our policy on waiting two weeks. So if anybody wants to, and there's only one person for two positions, so we're fine with that.
Do we have to waive it when there's just one person?
I think we formally have to waive it.
Yeah, we do have to.
Yeah.
I move that we waive the policy for reappointment.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Carol Agayman, 37 Neck Road, to the Tax Assessment Board of Review to expire on 10/15/2025.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Carol.
And thank you, all of you, for all you contribute.
Thanks. Okay, our last round of appointments for tonight, we have, and Joan, I'm gonna look to you to help me with these dates. I think I have these right. But it's the planning board. It's a nine-member board. Each term is for three years. There are five vacancies. However, they have to be staggered, so we have to do three, three, and three. So we have one term that's expiring July 15th of 2023, so that would be a little less than a one-year term. We have one term that's expiring July 15th of 2024, and then three expiring July 15th of 2025. We have four candidates, but when we get to any decisions on them, we have to consider where we're gonna place them. Okay? First, Stu Hardy, Stuart Hardy, 51 Summerfield Lane. Stu? Request reappointment. These are all reappointments.
These are all three-year terms?
So, no.
But I mean...
So we have to decide, we have to decide whether we're going to fill one of the shorter terms with anybody and/or fill the three-year terms. So there are three three-year terms available. There's one year-and-a-half term, basically, available, maybe a year and nine months. And there's one nine-month term available. So we have to decide where we're gonna put people.
Because no more than a third of the board can be...
Can, right. I, I understand that. But is this because we were late on reappointing and they...
You have vacancies.
And we had vac, okay.
So, sorry. Stu, go ahead, talk to us.
Well, I think everybody probably knows me. I've lived in Tiverton since the year 2000. I'm retired. I've been on the planning board for 13 years, and before that I was on the Conservation Commission from, since about the time I got to Tiverton in 2000. I'm very interested in serving on the planning board, and I got involved in the planning board because I, I feel very strongly that development, future development in the town of Tiverton, which is inevitable and desirable, should be, should, should proceed consistent with the values, the goals, and the, and the action items, the recommendations in our comprehensive community plan. I think that's also consistent with the state policy. But I, I take the comprehensive community plan very seriously, and I'm hoping that, that we can make as a priority for the planning board, putting some real attention and effort into working on the zoning ordinance, the zoning code, to bring that into compliance with the comprehensive community plan. Because the state process that we work under requires the town to first adopt a comprehensive community plan with goals and recommendations, and then bring its zoning code and its subdivision regulations into compliance in, to make, to make those two documents consistent with the comprehensive plan. So that would be my, my goal and my priority should I be reappointed. And I will try to convince my colleagues on the planning board that we need to, we need to really do some, some work on that in addition to our usual job of dealing with applications, hearing applications, approving applications. And so that would, that would, that would be what I would like to focus on in the next year or so.
Thank you.
Because we, we need, the, the planning board needs the tools to guide development in a way that, that maintains Tiverton in the way that the comprehensive community plan would like to see us go forward in the next five or 10 years, so.
Thank you. And Stu, you may have said it, and I may have missed it, but I want to make sure folks, everybody up here knows, and many people, you are the current chair.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Questions for Stu? Donna, did you have something?
I, I spend a lot of time with Stu. It's been a momentous two years. There's been so much that the planning board has been dealing with. So much detail, so much, so much. You want to do this again, Stu?
Not really. And, and I will volunteer for the shortest term. So if you want to reappoint me, appoint me for nine months. And maybe my sentence will end after nine months. Because this is not something I really look forward to doing. This is something I think I have to do for the town of Tiverton.
Thank you for that. Donna, did you have something?
I think you've done a great job. There's been challenges within the planning department, loss of a planner, new clerk, engineering, it'd go on and on and on. And then all the developments seems to be all at once. Seem to be keeping it at bay and not, you're not ruffled feathers or anything like that. You keep, you keep a good hand on what's going on with the planning, planning board. Keep, keep the conversation going. Give everyone a chance to talk and you, and you, and you keep order. And that's important. So anyway, thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you, Donna. I think it's really important that the planning board project an attitude of collaboration, cooperation, and professional respect when, when we're dealing with applicants. And I, and I try to do that.
Yep.
And I'm, by the way, I'm now being recorded. Our, our meetings are recorded. They're on YouTube, so anybody can watch it and anybody can judge for themselves.
That's good.
Well, I think that's important, though. I, I think that that was a step that we needed to, to add in because it's, it's important and there, there is so much going on, all of these developments. And, and, you know, with social media, people are out and they make up their own little stories and they go with one soundbite and kind of make it up as they go along. And the truth is not always there. So at least they can go back and they can relook at the, the meeting and, and see what actually happened and what was said and...
Right.
And so, but, and I think it's important that we are not turning over this whole committee at once because there's just so much learning going in. And I am the liaison and I'm still learning. My learning curve is very, very long with this. So having some people with some knowledge and some background is very important. So I thank you for stepping up again, Stu.
Thank you, Deb. We do have one vacancy on our nine-member board. And sometimes we have trouble getting a quorum, particularly when we try to put on a second meeting in a month. And so we're, right now, we're struggling to get a quorum in November for a second meeting. We always have at least one meeting. But that's why it's really important to keep, to keep that board, to keep as many members on that board as possible. Because if we drop below eight, it's going to be really hard to get a quorum. And keep in mind that under state law, if we have to cancel a meeting for lack of a quorum and we violate a time clock or, or a timetable, then an application is automatically approved. It's by, it's approved by default under state law. And, you know, I don't think anybody in the town wants to see that happen. So that's always a great concern on my part and certainly on the part of our, our excellent solicitor.
Do you have anything?
No.
Do you have anything?
Thank you for your service. Thank you for reapplying. Personally, I can tell you, I've tried to watch planning board meetings. I find myself changing the channel after about 10 or 15 minutes because I don't have a horse in a race. But I do appreciate that, especially something that may not be interesting.
They can get very technical and very boring.
Thank you.
So, Stu, thank you as well. I have one question I'll ask all those who come up. What role would you, do you see the planning board having in helping to ensure... What role would you, do you see the Planning Board having in helping to ensure that the general workforce, those who are employed, have the ability to live in town, can afford to live in town?
That's, you know, we take a lot of things into consideration. State law requires us to take five basic criteria into consideration, consistency with the comprehensive plan, consistency with zoning and the purposes of zoning, consistency with good environmental stewardship, and then two other criteria, which are based on dimensional considerations, ability to access a subdivision, for example. But we also take other things generally into consideration, the impact on the town fiscal structure. Are we, are we creating a, a problem for taxpayers, for example? And also, employment is, would be a consideration as well, but that is not part of, of the mandate that the state of Rhode Island gives the Tiverton Planning Board. That is really more something that the Economic Development Commission should, should be looking at.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to Janice. Thank you, Stuart. Janice Gomes, 58, Massey Road. And Janice, I knew you were one of the first audience members here tonight, so thank you. So, Janice, just tell us a little bit about why you're seeking reappointment.
Well, after working for the town for 30 years, retiring in 2017, I needed something to do. So, in 2019, I was appointed, and COVID set in, and it kind of set everyone back, but as far as I go, it's, it was kind of a delayed learning for me, and I'm catching up, there's an awful lot to learn, an awful lot, and I'm getting better at it, and I want to continue to serve the town, and hopefully plan the future.
Thank you. Any questions for Janice?
Just, just a comment, I agree with you, this is not a, a board that you jump on and learn really quickly. I think there's, there's a long learning curve.
Yes, there is.
There, there's so many different details, and I became a liaison while we were on the Zoom calls, and I found it more difficult to follow at that point, because I kept thinking, how, how do they know to ask that? How do they know to look at that? Because there's just so much to look at, and it's really a very, very important role, because we're looking at the development of our town. And I think that we all agree, we would like development, but we want it to be smart, and we want it to be appropriate, and to be in line with the comp plan. So, your role is, is very, very important on that committee, and, you know, the way that everyone interacts and, and works together is very important. So, I agree, it's not something you just step in and, and learn it quickly. I'm still learning with you.
Thank you. Yes, one of the things is when, when you get on the Planning Board is, you have, have to learn so many things that could actually cause a problem, the time clock, the, these are all new concepts when you get on there. And it's not just that, all the zoning, the ordinances, and the check-offs, you have to learn all that. And then, you have to make sure it goes with the comprehensive plan. So, it, it is a big job. It's a very important job in this town, as to what the vision is that the town people would like to have. We want development, we'd like it to be a little orderly, and you certainly wanna keep the way of life here. It's close to how we'd like it to be, but we do, you know, we do need business, we do need different development in town, but it's a big job, and I appreciate you giving your time to that.
Thank you, Donna.
Do you have anything?
Right now.
Do you have anything?
Thank you for your service, thank you for reapplying. I don't know you personally, I'm new to this government thing, too, and it's a good thing that I don't know you, because if I did know your name, then that's probably a bad thing. So, not knowing you personally is, is a very good thing, so thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
So, Janice, I wanna thank you for your many years of service as the senior senate director, and your time on the board. I'm gonna ask the same question, I'll rephrase it a bit. What do you see as the role of the Planning Board to help ensure that Tiverton is affordable for young families and other members of the workforce?
Well, I think we have to look at allowing more business to come in, to really help offset the tax base, but I think we need to pick and choose what we allow in, because we certainly want to keep Tiverton a quiet little town. And I got a newsflash on my phone the other day about the seven most quaint places to visit in the state of Rhode Island, and Tiverton was on that list, which really surprised me. So, we need to keep it that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna move on to Peter. Peter, Peter Vermonti, 3804 Main Road, requesting reappointment. Is Peter here? Okay, Peter's not here. And then, Adam Reposa, Adam Reposa, 31 Carpenter Street.
He didn't respond, he wouldn't be able to make it tonight.
Okay.
No response?
He responded today.
Oh.
He did email today and couldn't make it.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to waive, to consider anybody? Go ahead, Bill, motion to waive?
Oh, I'm doing my, moving my hand. Yeah, I don't have a bond with any of them, really.
Move this.
Motion to move my hand. Motion to waive the standard two-week policy.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. So, our other practice has been that folks need to be here for an interview. So, we don't have Mr. Vermonti or Mr. Reposa here, but I will take the pleasure of the, the committee. We have, again, we have five vacancies, four names on the paper, two are here tonight. We have a term expiring 7/15/2023, a term expiring 7/15/2024, and three terms expiring 7/15/2025, so I will entertain any motion. Jay?
Not a motion, but a comment.
Okay.
All right, so just to be clear, right now, we have four members that expire on the same date and the same year. We're only allowed three, so that's the primary reason we have to pick one of them, was the only reason. We have to pick one of them to, to go into a term that will end in 2024. The term that ends in 2023 is seat one, it was previously inhabited by Susan Gill, who resigned.
She resigned because she moved, I just wanna be clear about that. She moved out of town.
She fled town. So, I think we should not use that term for one of these people. Additionally, I have reasons why I would not wanna have one of these applicants continue with a three-year term, he's, that person isn't here. I would rather he heard it from me directly. So, for those reasons, I think we should continue this until we have spoken with the other two applicants.
Okay, well, we just approved a motion to waive our policy.
Right.
So, I will entertain any other motion that folks wanna...
Okay, I'll make them...
Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, Donna.
I feel that we already have two very strong candidates here, they've done a good job. I don't think they, I should have to wait, and I'm gonna make a motion that the three-year term expiring on 7/15/2025 for the reappointment of Stuart Hardy, 51 Summerfield Lane. Can we do two of them, or one?
You can make a motion with both, if you prefer.
And also, Janice Gomes of 58 Massey Road, also for a three-year term ending in 7/15/2025.
Second? Okay, motions were made and seconded, discussion?
Yes. Stu, Stu did verbalize that he really would prefer not to have a three-year term.
Does he wanna have less?
Stu, are you still here? I can't see.
I thought you said he would volunteer to do it.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I think it was kinda...
Would you be opposed to a three-year term? Let me put it that way.
No.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor of appointing Stuart Hardy of 51 Summerfield Lane and Janice Gomes, 58 Massey Road, each two-three-year terms expiring on 7/15/2025, raise your hand. Those opposed, none? I would suggest we move any further appointments to our next calendar.
They will continue to serve until a reappointment is made.
Yes, they continue to serve until appointment, an appointment is made. And plus, we still have another vacancy, so...
Another, another three-year.
So, we have one three-year term remaining to fill, one term that expires 2024 to fill, and one term that expires 2023 to fill. So, we have five, I'm sorry, three more terms to fill. We have two people who have applied so far. Thank you.
And, and I do, I, I agree with Stu, I mean, this, they're, they're having difficulty getting a quorum. They, they meet monthly, and when they try to do a special meeting, they have a lot of difficulty finding a date that they can get a quorum together, so we really do need to make sure that we get as many of those seats filled as we can.
Thank you. So, moving on, I was approached, I, no, wait, this is not, this is not the one, I'm sorry. Do we know where this one came from?
Came from the state.
This came from the state, the veterans, small business. You wanna talk about it, Chris?
So, the State Department, the State Department of Veterans Affairs has requested all towns adopt this National Veterans Small Business Week proclamation, has been passed around to every city in town, it was the last minute addition to the agenda. I didn't know, because it's gonna be the first week in November, that I suggested that we consider doing this. I do believe that Councilor Tim Teimateris has weighed in on, she didn't have any issue with adopting as a, as a proclamation.
So, I'll just very quickly read it, it's national...
I'll read it.
Oh, go ahead.
National Veterans Business, Small Business Week proclamation, whereas nearly one out of 10 small businesses across the United States is veteran-owned, from main street storefronts to virtual high-tech startups that advance America, veteran-owned small businesses are a pillar of our community and contribute to the foundation of our nation. And whereas veterans, small business owners are resilient, disciplined, and mission-oriented, thanks to their military service and commitment to serving our country and communities, and whereas we resolve ourselves to the strength of, of our strength in our communities, we must empower and support the giants that veteran entrepreneurial ship are in our economy, and whereas the National Veterans Small Business Week highlights the programs, services available to veteran entrepreneurs throughout the U.S. Small Business Administration and resource partners, and whereas the town of Tiverton supports and joins in this national effort to help American veterans, veteran-owned small businesses start, grow, and recover their businesses after a disaster, and help our communities thrive. Now, therefore, the Town Council of Tiverton, Rhode Island does hereby proclaim October 31st through November 4th, 2022, as the National Veterans Small Business Week, and that will be dated as of today.
Any discussion?
No.
Think it's a worthy cause, absolutely. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion to move the proclamation made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand, any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'll turn it and pass it, I would say, as well.
Thank you. Alex Nimorowski, your Eagle Scout project, please come. Discussion impossible, vote to approve, request to install medallions on town-maintained roads, storm drains for Eagle Scout project. Welcome, thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name is Alexander Nimorowski, I am a part of Troop 29, Little Compton. I am an aspiring Eagle Scout, and currently a life scout from the town of Tiverton. A requirement for the Eagle Scout rank is that you do a community service project. I decided to do a project in cooperation with Save the Bay, in which I will put medallions on storm drains to deter people from dumping waste into them. Save the Bay has already given me permission and works with Rhode Island DOT to mark state-maintained roads. I am requesting the towns' permission to put them on town-maintained, maintained roads, because they tend to have lower traffic, and an aspect of this project includes a level of leadership, so I will, I will be leading my fellow scouts in this task, and it is vital to ensure their safety. So, I believe that the lower-traffic roads will help in this, but also help my local community. Using local roads will increase visibility, because they tend to go through neighborhoods where people are more likely to be out walking around and able to see the scouts. Waste water that is dumped into these storm drains can lead to bodies of water having a multitude of issues, such as people becoming sick from bacteria such as E. coli and other infections. It can cause pollution, which can lead to algal blooms that suffocate and kill wildlife, which is mostly fish, and it destroys ecosystem. This is a severe environmental crisis that can be easily avoided with a simple and friendly reminder to people to not dump their wastewater into storm drains, and my project aims to stop this issue at its root with the medallions on the storm drains. I'm hoping that this will help avoid the environmental crisis in my community.
So, Alex, thank you for coming forward with this, and I'm impressed by your endeavor to be an Eagle Scout. It's not an easy task, I never got that far, I stopped at life, no, yes, I think, it's long ago. But this is a wonderful thing, so the medallions are kinda like this, and they just hook on to the grates?
Yeah.
Okay, and what do they say?
They say, "Save the Bay," like, "Don't dump your waste here."
Okay. And you're gonna do 1,300?
No.
Okay.
I was gonna say, that's a lot. There you are.
You gotta do them all.
No, thank you. I think it's an admirable project. Any questions?
Obviously, these things are...
Use your indoor voice.
Obviously, these things have been put on before, I guess they're fairly robust, it'll last a while.
They do.
I, I just wish there was a picture, I can't go, what's some Italian?
Yeah.
I don't know if I've ever seen one.
Hang on just a second, I think he's gonna show you one.
He hasn't started yet.
Yeah.
No, but he has a picture, one that he can...
I had no idea.
Is it on Save the Bay's website?
I'm not sure, I know I have a picture on my phone.
What, I don't know, what is it?
How do you affix it to the actual drain?
Like jewelry? Like it's jewelry to the drain?
Okay.
Oh, I, okay.
Oh, epoxy, okay.
Okay, yeah, I've seen signs like that, yeah. Has our DPW director weighed in on this?
Yes, I, I contacted him recently, and he has responded to me.
Affirmatively.
I'm looking at him, I'm looking at him behind you, so...
Is that a grimace or a grin?
Please grin.
Please grin. And any other questions for the council, Bill?
The only thing I would ask, would you be doing this now or after snow season? I'm just, it would be horrible to, you know, because our plows are awesome.
Yeah.
We spend a lot of money on our plows nowadays, and... We spend a lot of money on our plows nowadays, and we may be taking a couple of them with us. So I'm just wondering, is it something you would do now or after snow season?
Hopefully before. It's probably going to be in, within like the next two weeks.
Okay.
If I could add.
Yeah, please.
My name is Mark Duraske. He's got a master of Troop 29. The medallions go, if you imagine a catch basin that has the curb behind it, it goes on top of the curb, so it'd be well above where the, where the plows.
So it's not on the grade itself?
It's not on the grade itself. It's on the curb inlet.
Okay.
That's the term for it, so.
So how many of these are you placing?
Probably 30 to 50, maybe more, we'll see.
And you'll have your scout troop doing this with you?
Yes.
I think that's great. I think it's, it's a project that is for your town, but there's just such bigger implications. So I think it's, it's great that you're doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Donna?
I have two grandsons that became Eagle Scouts with, with your troop. It's a great troop, great leadership, and it's a very worthwhile project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved to approve Alex's request to install medallions on town-maintained roads, storm drains for Eagle Scout project. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
It's going to rain for a while in the next couple of weeks, though.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Alfonso wants us to hold off on that item, I believe.
I received a call today. He would like to have this continued to the November 14th meeting. Impossible.
Yeah, we have a pretty big agenda that night, so we can move it, but we might have to move it to a later date, if you can let him know that. So we're going to move item 8C to a later date. 8D, North Point Development, discussion impossible vote regarding request four. There's four requests, we'll take them individually. I'll move it to Chris in a minute, or Mike. One, petition for zoning amendment to expand planned development park to include the industrial-zoned areas of plat 109, lots 106, 107, and 108, and plat 220, lots 101 and 102. The second item, petition to abandon the paper streets in the Tiverton Industrial Park pursuant to the purchase and sale, dated June 23, 2022. Number three, request for property tax stabilization agreement, authorization to allow the administrator with tax assessor and legal counsel to explore and negotiate such an agreement subject to council review and approval. And number four, amendment to the purchase and sale agreement to include additional lots 705, 706, and 707 for sale by the Town of Tiverton. So would one of you two like to introduce this, and we can have the North Point folks come up?
Sure. Go ahead. I'll introduce them as part of the purchase and sale. There are some requirements that we delineate within a purchase and sale. Because they are buying land outside of the industrial park, the PDP has to be extended into those new parcels. This would require a determination from the planning board, so it really needs to be moved to the planning board. Their opinion will come back to the council before any other action would take place. The same thing holds true with the abandonment of the streets. There are, in that plat of the industrial park, there are a number of platted, while all those little lots are platted, all those streets were also platted. They have to be abandoned in order to be reincorporated. And then we did agree in the purchase and sale that we would consider a tax stabilization agreement. We would work with the tax assessor, we would look at the stabilization agreements we've done in the past, and we would formulate something and bring it for your ratification or approval. And it would encompass the entire development of their development and their build-out over time, depending on how that would look. I mean, it's, which is basically the infancy stages of that. And then the last piece is to accommodate some issues within that park, especially along that Brayton Woods area. They would consider buying three additional lots that we preserved to. When we originally came to an agreement with them, we weren't sure what we were going to do with the recycling centers, so we did keep land to the west of where Bill Sales is, to the south side of the power plant. When we initially looked at that, we did not think that those, that those acreage would be suitable for the recycling center, that the land across between the power plant and Longplex made more sense for the recycling center. So we kept both pieces. They're willing to incorporate these parcels into that acquisition, which would help bring them a larger buffer towards that area. So I think all four of these would, are worthwhile to entertain. We will get the documentation back to you for review. I don't think you have to make a final decision tonight.
Right. So just to be clear, one and two, we really would be referring those to the planning board?
Correct.
Okay. Three, please, because I know some people misunderstand what a tax stabilization agreement is and how it is advantageous to the town over time.
It's advantageous to both parties because it gives them a stabilized expenditure value for which they can plan on building out their development. And also it gives the town a very stable revenue stream that we can expect instead of having a fluctuating, and this was what we experienced with the industrial, with the power plant, was that some of these parcels can actually have a detrimental effect to the taxpayers on a rolling value of property, so.
So the property value can go.
It can spike up and down.
Peaks and valleys.
And it would, because it's such a large parcel.
Evens it out.
Right.
So this, this would stabilize.
Because of the uniqueness of the planned development, that uniqueness, it's good, you know, it's not, they're not easy to assess, right? It's like a power plant, that's not, not every town has a power plant, and this is going to be a planned development park with some buildings on it, so it's, you know, we'll be able to lock it in instead of having to file a higher expert appraisers to, who specialize in that, so.
Okay.
And recognize, we don't get any taxes on this property right now. We don't realize any taxes.
On any of them?
That we own.
Even the water departments, there's only two sliver pieces that we actually collect revenue on. But we haven't seen their conceptual issue of how they want to put this tax stabilization agreement together. I'm assuming it has something to do with the fact that there are some wetlands on this property, that there, you know, some open space that's going to be held available. So there are a number of component pieces that have to be looked at on behalf of everybody, and we would like to preserve those pieces as well. But we're not getting revenue on them now. It would make sense to look at something that is beneficial for both parties.
And it still comes back to us.
It does absolutely come back to you. It's not something that I or the assessor would do unilaterally without the authority of the council.
And item four, and I wasn't at the meetings because I think it was on a holiday for me, but the amendment to the PNS for those lots, I know, I believe that some of the feedback that was received in some of the public meetings that you had was around creating some type of a buffer and that this would allow that to happen.
It would, it would help if they, it would definitely help them. It would also help in another area of, there is some wetland areas, getting a roadway into. I think it would help facilitate making that roadway more suitable for both the M purposes, for the building purposes and for the buffer purposes, but.
Great, thank you. And if you can just reintroduce yourselves to everybody, thank you.
Hi, Attorney Tennesse Azar from Moses Ryan, attorney for the applicant.
My name is Andrew Valeri, and I'm with North Point Development.
Great, thank you. So if you just want to, from your perspective, why these four items are important?
So I think that Chris and Michael did a great job kind of laying it out. This is the first step in the process to really start this. You know, no final decisions are being made tonight, but we're excited to get this process moving, like they laid out, the zone change. This is already industrially zoned land, so this would just extend that floating PDP down to the, to the additional lots that aren't right now in the business park, but they are already zoned industrial, most of the property. So that's what that is, and we'd go to the zone, the planning board for their recommendation and then return to you guys. For the street abandonment, these were paper streets, they were never built, but they are platted. So this would just clean that up so that when North Point purchases the property, it'd be a clean parcel with none of these roadways that aren't going to be needed based on the plan. And as Chris mentioned, we'd like to discuss the TSA and start moving on that, so it's predictable for everyone. He made some great points about, you know, the property's not currently taxed, it's a unique property, so we'd be asking for that. And then, as we mentioned, the amendment would add those lots that the town was considering holding, but now it seems like it'd be suitable to include it in the property and hopefully move the development a little bit to create a little more buffer and have a little more room there. If you need to add anything or that cover up.
Great, thanks. One request I would have when we come back, and I'm looking at Stu, he may want this for the planning board, when you go to them on items one and two, if you can, I mean, these maps are great, but to me, they're still kind of hard to figure out. So if there's anything that can be put on a PowerPoint, put on the screen as a presentation would help us, would help the public to be able to see it.
Certainly.
So it'd be great.
Tomorrow.
PowerPoint's already been prepared for tomorrow.
Okay, good.
We're ready to go on that.
Good.
Everyone be able to see it.
And even number four, where those lots are. I know that's not going before them, but it'll come back before us, and so we're going to get the language back before we really do anything on that. Anybody have questions?
Number what, number four?
Maybe to show where the lots are?
Yeah, well, yeah, but we're just going to amend the.
Oh, okay. So that's an action point tonight.
That's an action point.
Okay, okay. That's what I wanted to be clear on.
It's just adding lot numbers to the original PNS. I think this is the third, this should be the third amendment, I think, right?
Yes.
So, but same price, same, same, same terms and conditions. We're just adding new lots because, as you said, after meeting with the neighbors, they thought these lots might be, help them create a bigger buffer to the residential neighborhood.
Is he still here?
So D1, the petition for zoning amendments, correct me if I'm wrong, this is also going to require administrative subdivisions because you're not buying entire parcels of other properties.
That's correct.
So that's going to have to go to the planning board, too.
So technically, for an administrative subdivision, if you have, if you start with a larger number of lots than you finish with, it's an administrative approval, but it'll be discussed at the planning board as part of the master plan. Because right now, there's a huge number of lots in the business park, and then, like you said, we're going to portion, a portion of the lots are going to be retained by some of the other individuals we're purchasing from. Plus, you have to take the abandoned streets and merge them all together, so that'll all be cleaned up in an administrative subdivision, yes, and reviewed by planning.
Other questions?
Number one and two are required to go to the planning board for the recommendation. So it's really just administrative, just building the record that they were referred to, the planning.
So even though the abandoned streets are inside the existing industrial park, we have to.
We have to ban it.
They're planted, it's recorded plan, so they do exist. They're, unlike that other.
Right, they were deeded to the.
These were actually deeded in, or they're actually dedicated, actually dedicated is a better term, yeah.
Right. No, the other ones were deeded. These are dedicated.
These are dedicated.
Yeah. So I'll entertain a motion to refer items one and two to the planning board, D1 and D2.
So moved.
Second?
Second, any further discussion on those items? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay. Moving to the tax stabilization agreement, I entertain a motion to authorize the town administrator with the assessor and legal counsel to explore and negotiate a tax stabilization agreement subject to council approval.
So moved.
Second?
Jay and Bill, any discussion on that one? Okay. And number four, before I go to that, and Gordon, I'm going to put you a little bit on the spot, and if you don't feel comfortable, that's fine. Your perspective on the discussion around those lots and how that may be helpful to your homeowners association?
I was going to say, I think I have a tax.
Thank you, council. We don't know, okay, because we've had some preliminary data. Andrew has been nice enough to share that data. There's been discussions about different setbacks and the requirements on zoning and planning. Certainly, it's a move in the right direction, to the extent that the plans will be redrawn and the actual buffer's been determined. I don't think it's a matter of actual feet, but more or less, all the other attributes that come along, line of sight, noise, in the wintertime, when the trees and the ground cover all drop their leaves, if 40, 50, 60, 200 feet, line of sight can still be present. So again, I think we're very early on in the discussions. We want to keep the discussions open and keep the information flowing, but the answer is we're not exactly sure what that means.
That's fair.
All right. I looked at the plot maps. Andrew had said that there was approximately 10 extra acres. When I look on the maps for those three plats, that was seven.
705, 607.
Five, six, and seven. I didn't come up to 10 acres adding up. It was much less than that. So I'm not sure if there's additional land somewhere else that we're talking about, but certainly, we like to just continue to be involved and, and, you know, see how this plays out.
Thank you. Andrew?
I can address that.
Can you pull the mic closer, please?
Sure, sure. I can address that. I actually have to apologize to Mr. Craig about that. I thought it was closer to 10 acres, but it actually is closer to three. So it was just a misspeaking on my half, which I apologize for.
Okay. And many of the other things, Mr. Craig, that you spoke of really falls to, not to this council, but to the planning board, so. But I do appreciate that North Point has been, you know, willing to listen to folks, you know. I put my social work hat on, the best thing we can do is spend time and listen, hear, and see how we can adjust as we go along, and the better the plan becomes. So do I have a motion?
We get a vote on three.
Oh, we didn't vote on three? So all those in favor of the motion to authorize the town administrator on this tax stabilization agreement? It was already made. All those in favor? Thank you, Bill. I missed that. Now, do I have a motion on number four?
So moved.
So your motion is to amend the PNS agreement to include additional lots 705, 706, and 707 for sale by the Town of Tiverton?
And let the, give the town administrator or council president or acting town president execute the document.
As Mike directed, to let the town administrator or the acting president or the president execute that document?
What he said.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Brian.
Look forward to being before you again.
Tomorrow night's, Mike, tomorrow night's the concept plan before the planning board forming, that's seven.
Oh, tomorrow night at 7 o'clock is the concept plan for this, before the, 6:30? 6:30?
I have a bit of.
Before the planning board. Thank you. And that's here?
Yeah.
That's here. All right. Rick, you're on stage for a few. First one is discussion impossible vote regarding ride-out request for Highland Road, Bridgeport Road traffic pattern change. And I have to admit, when this was explained to me in our prep meeting, I was confused, and I drove up Bridgeport Road the other day and tried to explain it to my wife, and I got it completely wrong, so.
You were even more confused.
No, no, when I saw it on paper, I understood, but before I saw it on paper, no.
Well, thank you, good evening. DOT, when they're doing some work on Highland Road, including paving, wants to realign the traffic pattern. This is only in regards to the Bridgeport Road eastern section where it meets Highland Road. There's a green lawn, somewhat triangular-shaped median strip there, that if you've driven up and down the road, you'll have seen. They want to take the current northern leg, which is about 50 or 60 feet long, which is now both east and westbound traffic. They will switch that to only westbound traffic.
So going towards the pond?
Yes.
Wow. Toward, towards the Black Goose.
Yes.
Towards Black Goose.
Right. And the--
All right, all right. That's what I, that's why I had to see the-- Towards Black Goose.
And it's only that 50 or 60 foot stretch on the north side of that lawn median. On the southern side of that same lawn median strip, it's currently, for again, 50 or 60 feet, it's currently eastbound and westbound. They want to switch that to only eastbound. In other words, towards Westport. So right now, you can go on the north side of the triangle coming from Black Goose and take a left onto Highland Road. You will only be able to do that on the southerly side. And the same thing right now, if you were traveling south on Highland Road, you would be able to go by the northern triangle side, go an extra 20 feet, and then take a right-hand turn. Is, that's what's allowed now. That would only be one way. So DPW has, we're not the ones who call the shots, but DPW has no objection to that. The only possible hiccup could be a tractor trailer heading eastbound on Bridgeport Road would have a tight turn if he wanted to go north on Highland Road. I have yet actually to see a tractor trailer going there. So I don't see that as an issue.
So Rick, let me try to explain this in my head, because now, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little more confused.
They mark it real well.
Why do they, why do they want this again?
I actually don't know the reasons. However, it makes sense from a DPW point of view, there's no real need to have two-way traffic and two-way traffic separated by maybe 20 feet or so.
So if I'm going down Highland, right now, I can go straight to Evelyn's, or I can go right to the Black Goose.
Yes.
Correct. What this does is I would be able to go right to the Black Goose, but not straight to Evelyn's anymore.
No, you can still go south. But if you were to go an extra 20 feet or so on Highland Road, before you get to the gut, you could also take a right-hand turn and head west on Bridgeport Road.
You don't want to do that.
So I--
If I may, this is a, a, a picture, starting off with the acting president. So this is in orientation, the way we are sitting right here in the office. You can go by the town hall. You can go this way.
Yeah.
Or you can go that way.
Yeah.
You can go that way. They want to make that only one way.
Okay.
Right now, you can come up this way, or you can come this way. They want to make that--
So this, this is not changing?
Highland Road stays two-way, all the way down.
Up through the gut.
Just the northern, south sides of that dirt are one-way, counterclockwise.
So to Susan's question, I'm not losing, Susan, access to my house.
No, they're--
It's just a slight modification.
Yeah, okay. I thought it was a more major modification.
I think they're trying to make it safer, but--
Yeah, I mean, I didn't find it unsafe, but--
Yeah, because I used to come up here because I want to go here. I come over here.
Yes.
Where it's safer if I come over here and then go up. And I can go this way, too.
25 years.
Yeah, so it's a safer pattern, actually.
I've never noticed any problem whatsoever with safety, but DOT would like to do it, and DPW has no objection.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion regarding the Rhode Island DOT request for Highland Road, Bridgeport Road traffic pattern change to go forward.
To approve it, okay. Donna made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll make a second, but I--
You have a question?
We have question, yeah. Do we need to have a public hearing?
It's their road.
Because it's a state road?
They just want to be good neighbors, I guess, right, Mr. Rogers?
Yes. Actually, we can't really say yes or no.
Well, it--
Highland Road and Bridgeport are both state roads.
They're just being nice. They're just asking.
I wish they're asking.
They don't have to, right?
Any other discussion?
If I may, Mike. Basically, what DPW is requesting is permission for DPW, acting on the town's behalf, to respond to Rideout's request to modify the existing traffic pattern on Bridgeport Road and Highland Road as described, and inform Rideout that the town of Tiverton has no objection to the traffic pattern modification. Not that we approve or disapprove legally, it's simply that we have no objection to their plan.
No objection zones at their cost.
Yes. Okay. That's understood. Any further discussion?
We don't have to amend anything, do we?
I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Rick, stay there.
Rick, do you know something we don't know about paving Highland Road?
Yes, it's probably going to be done next year. They've been working on all the catch spaces this summer.
I've noticed that, I was amazed.
So they will be paving it this coming spring. What do you say? Don't hold me to it.
Deb seconded the motion. Rick, item F, discussion and possible vote to renew contract for specified recreational facility and turf management services for calendar year 2023?
Yes, yes, please. DPW does request to renew the contract, as stated, Michael. And this is the first of a possible two one-year renewals as allowed by contract.
So this is already contained in the contract as an extension possibility?
Yes.
Okay.
And there will be no increase in price. He's going to maintain the current prices, which is a nice deal for the town.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the request to renew the contract.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Donna? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Now we move to discussion and possible vote on approval for a page you throw Trash Bag Holiday, beginning Tuesday, December 27th, ending Sunday, December 31st, 2022, and to fund advertisement of Trash Bag Holiday and Christmas tree curbside pickup schedule.
One correction, Mike, is it Saturday?
Saturday.
December 31st.
The Saturday, December 31st, yeah, okay. With that modification, does anybody need explanation? This is an annual thing that we've been doing? Everybody understand? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Counselor Edwards? Second. Counselor VR, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
And you're not off yet. You're still on stage. DPW Director Rogers, discussion and possible vote to approve spending approximately $16,000 to repair the Moorebach M12R chipper.
Yes. Basically, that's a piece of equipment that we need to have operational. It did, the shaft became out of a line, and it actually sent a tooth through the base. So the base and the, and the chipper itself, the rod, has to be replaced.
So this is a wood chipper?
Yes.
Yeah.
How old is it?
I don't remember, but I think it's around 10 or so years old, Donna. I'm not positive.
Other than that, it's been pretty good?
Yes, it's, it does its job, and it's something that basically we almost have to have.
Yeah, you find debris on the road, you have to do something with it.
So we also get quite a bit of reimbursement from FEMA when we actually use it in storms.
Okay.
So it's a vital piece, especially during major storms. But you don't have money in your budget for this. Are you looking for additional capital monies? Is that what you--
This, we, well, we're always looking for more money because--
I'm just trying to clarify what you're asking for.
We've gone crazy. But we have money in the budget right now to repair the chipper.
Okay.
Just checking, that's all.
So the, the vote would be to approve spending from the current budget, $16,000, to repair the Moorebach M12R chipper?
Yes.
So moved. Do I have a second? Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Yeah, if it is a bulldozer, it's a chipper.
So now we go to Director Rogers, discussion and possible vote to approve spending approximately $25,000 to repair the 2008 International Plow Dump Truck.
So this is the one that's having for capital money?
Yeah. That's what I learned, how I learned on a three-speed on the column to do my manual, on a pickup truck, not a dump truck.
So, Rick, do you want to give a little history on this particular piece of equipment? Because it's, I think it will help justify your issue.
Yes, thank you. Back in 2019, I don't know if the wheels started turning in 2018, but in 2019, the town purchased a used snowplow sander truck. It's also a dump body. About two years ago, similar to the ambulance the town had, it had a international engine. It blew, the, it was still running a little bit. We used it at the dump because we didn't have to go very far. And then that, that blew. So we did request a few times to have a new engine put in it, but nobody, not, I mean, outside sources couldn't verify that a new engine would, a new rebuilt engine would actually solve the problems. Over time, we eventually came to the conclusion that the rebuilt Jasper engine would do the trick. We then received permission and did spend, we saved $3,000, by the way, approximately, for $32,000, put a new rebuilt engine in it. We then expected to have approximately $5,000 in cost to repair the hoses, the lines, the valves, the valve bodies that operate the sander conveyor, the sander spinner, and the plow. When we could not estimate it in-house, we eventually brought it up to, after the engine was done, we drove it up to Madigan, who does all the servicing on this type of machine that we have. They're the ones who put the, the two 2019s together for the 750 and the 550. They looked at it, and they said, you're looking at 20 to 25 grand. That is not something we have the money to do in our budget. So we would hope and request some kind of funds to do that. Right now, we have no spare plow truck, which is not a good thing. So it's more money than we expected. Things have gone up, of course, but also, it's more work needed to be done. One of the big reasons is because it sat for three years. Things deteriorate. It just, the weather gets to it. It's not something that we had room to put inside a garage, so it sat outside. And you couldn't run it to help, you know, get rid of the condensation, et cetera, because it didn't have a functioning engine. So that's the position in which we now find ourselves, and thus the request.
So Chris, where are you suggesting the capital funds come from?
Well, there are a couple of places we could do. And it, I'm not, you know, while I would like to have it done as quickly as possible, it could wait until another meeting, but it's either the American Recovery Monies, Gaming Monies, Council Contingency. I just don't have a source other than those right now to fund this. So, and I know that you guys are looking at capital at a different timeframe, other than the one request I'm going to, that's coming up next, that is going to be a priority. But I'll, I'll explain that when we get to it.
You also recognize that it may mean you reprioritizing--
Yep.
--the remaining money.
It is.
So you're saying this is a priority for you?
It is.
So Rick, do they, is, is the truck currently at the repair place?
Yes.
So they, they're pretty confident that 25 grand's going to do it? 25 or less?
That, that's what they estimate, and within reason. But for instance, we did request, I believe it was 20 or 17,000 for the, the front end loader, and it came in about 1,500 higher than that. So it wouldn't surprise me if this comes in at 22, but it wouldn't amaze me if it comes in at 27 either. But we think it's coming in at 20 to 25, thus the request for 25. But none of, none of those guys will give you a guarantee.
Right.
Because they end up finding other things wrong when they start tearing it apart, even though they did an inspection.
Like the bulldozers.
Yep.
Yes.
So, so what do we need to do here? Not authorize 25?
Not to exceed 27. I'd say not to exceed 27.
We have contractors, right, that do the snow removal? Would that do suffice until--
We don't, we don't have contractors to, we have two.
Nobody applies.
Nobody, oh, oh, because of the insurance?
No, for whatever reason.
Nobody applies?
We, we have feelers out. We have people, I spend a lot of time talking to people, but nobody has, so to speak, signed on the dotted line. And it's something I'm going to be talking to Chris about, of course, this week. So we, we're hopeful, but there's no guarantees. And not having a spare truck is a disadvantage.
Especially when you only have one mechanic, right?
Yes.
Do we have any money in the contingency fund for it?
Oh, we haven't spent a lot of that.
Well, but look ahead it.
Yeah.
You have to take out from salaries and the like.
Right, that's, that's where that money is earmarked for. Let me see if I can come up with a plan for where to take it out of. I mean, we could obviously use American Recovery Money, there's plenty of money there, but--
Yeah.
And it is a desperate need, but--
So what if we, in order to move ahead, what if we had a motion that allowed for the repairs to be made, not to exceed 27, to give a little cushion? And to be, to come from the American Rescue Act funds unless the town administrator comes back with a different plan?
Okay.
Is that okay with folks?
So moved.
Got a motion from Bill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Now--
So--
Anybody knows anybody who wants to plow? Please have them give you a call.
So don't go far, because you're a part of this next one as well, too.
There's signs everywhere.
Yeah, we put them up, it's--
I mean, not just in town, there, because I drive into Mass for work, and they're on the highways.
Yeah, Mass DOT, yeah.
Mass DOTs, yeah. They've got them on the, the signs.
So--
I'm sure they do.
Thanks to Chief Jones, he reached out to our counterparts of the USDA. And while we're discussing using gaming money, he put, obviously, he's looking for vehicles too, but he took all of these vehicles, in addition to his, the trailer, the skid steer, and another snow truck, and some four-way plows for Rick, to see if he could get those added to the grant. Not only did they adopt it, they gave us the award for it. So we're going to get $164,800 as a match to whatever we use for gaming money. My issue with it is, the longer we wait to do this, the longer it puts him behind trying to find another snow truck and some of the equipment that he is desperately needing. So I'm just asking to expedite this one piece of the gaming money, because we've already gotten the award for the grant to do it. I know it usually goes the other way around, but it's, Chief Jones is, I'm going to give you another one. Not only did he do that, he's actually maybe getting us another $490,000, because we're going to take the money we're going to use for the, I know this is not on the agenda, but for the radio systems, the 1.4 million, we think that they're going to fund that as a grant, too. So that money would be going in, that pool of money with the gaming money. But Rick does need to have another snow truck? I mean--
Well, we have the need, and if we don't approve it, we've lost some, right?
So he just, the longer we push him, the longer he's getting into the snow season. How many trucks have you looked at now that we can't buy, because we don't have the money to--
Well, we've looked at plenty, you know, either through the internet, through magazines, or we actually went up to a site. And there was a very nice one that was 95,000, but it had the plow, had the sander, it was a 550. And so we said, we're interested in that. We said, we can, can we put down a deposit? They said, well, how long? I said, well, it would have to wait till the 24th meeting. They said, we're not holding it that long. We then checked with it last week, and somebody had already come, put a deposit, and paid. And it's--
That's, that's the issue that's up against--
So you're, you're looking for 316,150? Is that the amount? Is that the amount? That's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, I, I believe that that's what it will be. At the end of the day, we're authorizing $471,000 to be spent.
Okay.
We'll be getting back $164,800.
Still a hell of a deal. So Rick, this is a new plow truck?
A new what?
No, it will not be, it'll be another used one.
No, no. And just to give you an idea of the scope, it was, maybe it was like a 750 size, you know, maybe a 33,000, 35,000 GVW truck. It was a chassis and a cab, and it had the plumbing and the frame for a plow. No body, no plow, $75,000. And it was a 2003. So prices, prices for equipment is, are up there.
And as fast as we find them, they're going off, we need to sweep. So.
So.
By the way, we didn't even look twice at that $75,000. That was way out of the range.
And I will say, as it relates to Chief Jones, he has his vehicles sitting in a lot waiting right now. They're gonna be gone if we don't acquire them.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the request to use $471,000 of the current casino gaming, gambling funds for the purchase of the trailer for $25,000, the skid steer and attachments for $95,000, the truck plow sander for $105,000. These are all not to exceed. The four-way plows, three each at 22K each, for 6, for $66,000. That totals $291,000. Then the police cruisers for $180,000, which comes out to 471, with the understanding that we will be reimbursed from USDA for $164,850.
And would you mind repeating that? I'm not that fast.
I'll give you a copy of this.
Okay.
It's basically saying, Rick, that everything that's on here, if, if we vote yes, gets approved for the 471.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just to show where, I'm like, the fourth page in that document, is the USDA reserving the monies for us?
Right.
So, and we have, we have subsequently received the award.
Yep. Yeah, and that, again, I commend the chief, because he.
He's been doing a phenomenal job.
And part of it.
And he's not done.
And part of it is, he has built very good relationships with grant makers, and that's what you have to do. So Jay made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Deb. Any discussion? All those in favor? And Noah abstained?
I abstain.
And I would like to add my thank yous and kudos to Chief Jones also. He does a terrific job, and DPW appreciates it.
He certainly looked after you this time.
Yes. Thank you.
Chris, not on the agenda, but think about whether or not we need a grants person.
Do you, if I may, Chris, do you, or Mike, do you want any comments on Kay from DPW, or you all said?
You can stay and weigh in if you want. I'll reference where I think you were gonna go.
So Kay, is Administrator Catta discussion impossible vote to ratify the three-year contract with Weston and Sampson Engineers, Inc. for professional engineering-related services? Chris?
So as some of you may know, for the planning board, they'd been using steer engineering for a number of years. We utilized Weston Sampson to hire a part-time planner, contract planner, yeah. But she recommended that their firm could also do the engineering, it's a separate part of the company. I reached out to them, inquired, also found out that they're a master price agreement vendor, so that it doesn't require us to go out to bid, we can just adopt them as part of the state's master price agreement. Their pricing is very reasonable. I put the contract that we utilized for steer in front of them, exactly the same verbiage, except for changing the names and the dates. They were amenable to it, they had no issue with it. I will tell you, I know that some of you are all aware that Rick has been stepping up, doing that work in the meantime, as additional duties to what he normally does. I will try to resolve that issue at a later date, but it's, it would alleviate a little bit of burden for him, but he does, he's been doing a very good job, don't get me wrong, but we do need to have a full-time firm working on behalf of the planning department.
Rick does too much.
Where, where's the money? Like.
So the money comes out of the way that we paid steer. So the applicant.
But I don't see what you paid steer, that's.
So. It's all done through escrow, but it's based on fees that are based on their contracts. So it, it, they're all master price agreement fees. They're, they're so much similar, like 195, depending on who does the work. But they're, it's all done by the applicant, the applicant pays those fees, the town doesn't pay the fee.
I, I understand that, but I don't have any information to go by. I don't know what it's costing, I don't know what's, what it's per hour. And I do have an issue that we have the planner AO working for the same company.
I don't have an issue, because they're independent.
I don't know, I just think that's kind of a conflict to me, but I, I don't have the numbers I need. I don't know what I'm doing here. I, I can't look at anything, I can't look at what steer made per hour, what was paid. Is it paid per hour? Is it paid for the meeting?
Again, hourly rate.
I, I don't feel like I can, I can do anything with this, I'm sorry.
But it's the same contract.
There's no money, I don't see no money here.
Because you're not paying any money here, it's.
But you're gonna pay them something, no?
They come out, the applicants pay for the service.
The applicants pay for all of that.
Is that accurate, Rosemary? Applicants don't pay for it?
Some things you have to go up and do with the town.
What, what does the town pay for all the planning budget?
There's no hourly rate. I've seen it in other contracts.
But shouldn't I know what an applicant's gonna have to pay?
And if I may add, the town engineer, two cents. It is nothing wrong, and it's quite typical, if people are on the same side of the table to work for the same company. So the engineer who's reviewing the plans, working for the same company that the interim planner, AO, works for, that's not unusual. That happens all the time.
The interests are aligned.
Yes, the interests are aligned, they're not on opposite sides.
With the town's, with the town's interests.
Yes.
Okay, so the interest doesn't align, okay.
No, the, the interests are aligned, so they're on the same side. So when you said we're sitting on the same table, they're, they're both working on behalf of the town, the planner and the engineer. So their interest is to protect the town, so their interests are aligned, so we're.
So and the fees are set by our escrow ordinance that we set aside for the things that the planning board does. The fees scheduled are already set aside, they can't get any more than what the, the planning board already charges them. The money just sits in there, and the planning board monitors what, what it is they have the.
Is there any information on what's being, what's?
We've done this once before, a couple of years ago.
I still see any money here, I don't know what to.
Well, we just, we actually just approved.
We just approved that.
A whole bunch of.
Escrow fees.
I'm just trying to find them.
A lot of them went down, some went up, there was.
The planning board hasn't hired an engineer, and I've yet to see a bill come through.
We haven't had it, we haven't had it before, because the plans weren't sent, there's some major projects that weren't out there, and I don't do any thanks to, to.
But even when steer was here, we never got a bill for steer for the planning board. It was always paid for by the applicant. There is, $10,000 been carried forward for the last three years. It's never been used. That's why when you said you needed to do a traffic study, we said, no issue, we would hire somebody independent to come and help and do that, and we did. But it had nothing to do with steer.
And the rates have been approved via the NPA. These are rates that other entities use.
So you don't have to go out and bid with the NPA.
Correct.
So other people have vetted these prices?
They've already gone out to bid for the state. State's agreed that these vendors, at these rates, can do this work.
So when they're sitting at a planning board meeting, they're not getting paid?
They are, they're being paid for by the applicant.
By the, they're there for the applicant?
No, they're, they're for the town.
They're for us, but the applicant has to pay.
The town makes them put up money in escrow.
Oh, okay.
The planning board makes them do whatever, has them do whatever, the planning board thinks that they need to do, which is fine. They send a bill to the planning, to the planning department, the AO, the planner or the administrative officer looks at them, and they usually agree to it, and they send it down to be paid, but it comes out of escrow.
So the applicant, at that time, when they need the steering, would then know what the cost is gonna be? They get that from steering? I mean.
They don't, they just, they basically get a bill of how much money they drew down on the amount they gave. They don't have any say in how much, how many hours they work, or the performance of, of what the work is. That's all the direction of the planning board.
Okay.
They get their hourly rate, and when they apply, they accept it.
I'm confused like Highland Road.
No, but it is, it falls to the applicant, not, but the engineer is still, like Rick, if he were doing it, he's working on it, not, he's doing it out without his DPW hat on, he's doing it as an independent engineer, and he's focused on what the town's needs are, so that he can say, well, no, the applicant needs to do X, Y, and Z. They didn't do this right, or they should do this differently, or whatever the case might be.
And that's what steer would have done, or any other firm that does it in their place, will do it on behalf of the town at the direction of the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason they left is because they did not have an engineer.
So they, they lost an engineer, they got, she was replaced with a woman who went through maternity, and they didn't have anybody else to, to replace that service. So they couldn't fulfill the contract, even if we wanted to extend it.
Okay.
So do I have a motion to ratify the three-year contract, which is done through the master price agreement with Weston and Sampson Engineers, Inc. for professional engineering and related services?
And do we have to have a date?
Do you have the dates on this, Chris?
The dates are out.
I think it expired June 30th, if I remember correctly.
October 1st.
So November 1st through, 22 through November 1st of 25.
November 1st, this year.
And actually, we did hire them for the month of October as a, as a per diem contract.
Do I have a second, Bill?
There it is, right there.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
DPW interests, thank you.
Thank you. L, Administrator Catta, discussion impossible vote to ratify contract for number two heating oil to Casey's Oil and Propane.
So the school administration went out as their annual duty to get contracted oil for both the town of Tiverton, the school department of Tiverton, town of Little Compton, and the school department of Little Compton. There was only one bidder, similar to last year, it's 435 a gallon. It is what it is, it's, we really don't, I think, we went out, I don't know, cash price last week, it could have been 565 a gallon.
Yeah. Yeah. Because I just recently, not last week, but I think a week before, I got a delivery, and it was like 535.
Whoa.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not cheap.
I'll wait.
Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to ratify the contract for number two heating oil to Casey's Oil and Propane.
So moved.
Donna and Jay is the second. Do I have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay. Administrator Catta, discussion impossible vote to ratify three-year fire chief employment contract with William S. Bailey III. Come on up.
Come on up, Bill. So Bill and I went back and forth with this for a little bit. We've, it was a very amicable, mutual negotiation when we were done. Actually, I had Tim Grabasa take a look at the contract. We used the very same format that we use for Bruce Primal's. So the format is identical, he, all the provisions, Tim had no issue with. It boils down to what did we agree to? And I think, based on the parameters that the council gave us to work through, well, well within the limitations that the council had provided, Bill's agreeable to do this at, for six months at $96,000 and $98,500 for the remainder after that, for six months, and then each year after that would have a provision for devaluation and, and a performance review. Basically, the same kind of benefits. The only thing different I did, similar to a prior chief that had come before you, there was some issues as to, chief would be coming on and really has no uniforms, based on the town. So he had some requirements that he outlined to me that he thought would be appropriate to start as a beginning chief. I don't think it's at all inappropriate for the town to fund those beginning uniform issues. He would then be entitled to the biannual stipend of 650, whether it's in January or July thereafter. I think he's, the contract itself is very, very reasonable. I, I don't have any issue with it, and I'd ask that you adopt a ratifying of this contract.
So the initial uniform costs are outside of the contract?
Yes. I do apologize, I didn't put, because I don't know the price of it, but we will, you know, allow this money in the department to buy uniforms.
So does that include also, like, the firemen, the jackets and the helmets and all? Okay.
And the badges or whatever?
Yep.
Any questions?
I was, I was, I was, I was just wondering why prior and proposed is so different, and what the thinking was on that.
So the difference between where the prior chief was and the current chief is, is our new chief will not be coming in for the need of having medical, where the prior chief had a whole family plan. So that was a very expensive part of why there's a differential here.
And those savings were able to help offset the base salary increase, which we know that we have such a hard time enticing people into positions.
It's on par with the police chief.
It is.
If, if that was the thinking.
It is, but his contract is coming up for renewal or evaluation. Actually, the deputy chief comes up first, his comes up right after it, so this would be right in par with what those are gonna be.
Yeah.
Other questions?
No, and it keeps us competitive?
Yes. As competitive as we've ever been.
Well, I think that's important.
No, it is, and I'm, I'm not trying to belittle it, it is what it is, I do get that. But this is a step in the right direction.
Further questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to ratify a three-year contract as presented for William S. Bailey as our new fire chief, William S. Bailey III as our new fire chief.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Welcome aboard, chief.
Any opposed? Bill?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
Have a safe drive home.
Next one should be quick, it's really just starting the process of developing an ordinance, or modifying existing ordinance, if there is something we can modify, to identify where the use of vaping products and/or the use of marijuana, cannabis products will or will not be permitted in public with the new recreational marijuana law. We'll probably be faced with situations where people may want to smoke, and we may not want them to smoke or to use those products. And then it was brought to my attention while we're doing that, maybe we should think about vaping. And again, this would be public areas, not, you know, we can't tell you, you can't smoke in your house or in your backyard. But public areas, it could be inclusive of anything indoors? Yeah. Anything that's not town property indoors, or just town property indoors?
Town property.
Yeah.
Anything that we control.
Yeah.
So how does a state see vaping?
That's a good question. I know we did something in East Province similar to, I don't know if we had enabling legislation to do it for vaping, but I think it's part of the same. I know that marijuana law allows cities and towns specifically to regulate the, where people can smoke in public marijuana, assuming, you know, that pass, well, we know it's gonna pass, but, I mean, we know that's law. So you can now smoke legally as of December 1st, I think, right?
I think so.
So you can now regulate, much like you regulate cigarettes, I don't know if your town has a no smoking in the public parks or at fields, sports fields. So you probably have to adopt that.
No, we don't, well, we don't think we do. Well.
We can have it all together.
Yeah, we can have it all together.
If we do, it's, I haven't found it yet.
So regular smoking, you know, we do that, but I just wonder.
You know, indoors, you can't smoke a cigarette, by that state law anyway, any town.
Right.
So, but, but public parks and sidewalks and things like that, things that the town owns, we can prohibit the use of cigarettes as well as marijuana. And I, I think vaping, I just don't remember where, where that came from, like.
So this is simply allowing us to start the process?
Move forward, let's, let's draft something.
This is, this is just for the use of, not for the sale.
Correct.
Correct, this has nothing to do with sale. That's on the ballot.
So is it in the same par as public drinking, where you can't drink?
Can't be on the sidewalk with the, but you bring up a good point. Deb, we probably need to look at, depending on how the vote goes, our zoning laws in relation to where we would allow retail marijuana shops to be located? Yeah.
Yeah, if that ordinance.
Yeah, so we have to have that in our.
Right.
We still maintain control of that part of the.
Subject to zoning, yeah.
Yeah, but we have to create the zoning ordinance.
That's actually what I, that's actually what I was thinking this was for.
And there are, there are quite issue with opportunities right now. We usually would exact like this.
Right.
So we have to amend that.
Right.
I, I just never have understood, even as a young girl, the, the word recreational in front of drugs. Never, ever does it ever make any sense to me, because we, we don't go recreational tobacco smoking. We don't do, I mean, we don't do recreational fentanyl. I mean, come on. This is, the recreational, I'd like to strike it. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Medicinal, right?
It's, it's drug use. I mean, recreational, well, do we use it for drink? Recreational alcohol abuse. I mean, I, I just, it's nutty to me.
Well, setting the nuttiness aside.
It's just nutty.
Can vote no on that?
Yeah, vote no on the retail, if you like, if you like.
How do we want to go about this?
So it's really just directing the council or the solicitor to come up with something if somebody wants to work with him on it. I just put it forward because I didn't want us to miss the opportunity that we need to take.
You gotta be proactive.
We'll take a look at it. We did, we did, we did something similar in East Providence a couple of months ago, so I don't think it'll take much time. Just gotta figure out where it fits in with your ordinances.
Okay.
Should we wait until you see what the vote is or?
No, for this, this is regardless of whether or not, so right, so as of December 1st, if you did use recreational marijuana, there's nothing that I know of that prohibits you from standing outside this building and smoking a joint.
Okay.
Now with our current ordinance, no.
Right. And even state law.
Might make the meetings go quicker, but.
So this would say whether or not you can do that.
Why don't you just use sort of the same law that you use for drinking in public?
Well, that, and that's what Mike's gonna do.
I'll get it. I'll get it.
I mean, why reinvent the wheel?
Then that we give Mike personal authorization to develop an ordinance to regulate the use of marijuana and/or vaping within the town of Tiverton.
Should it be around children? Is there any way to stop that?
Say that again.
Children? Is smoking this around children?
You gotta be 18.
No, she means nearby.
Oh, I don't know. Good question.
Small children?
Not sure. That's hard to enforce.
Parents can smoke while they're changing diapers.
Yeah. And I'll take a look at that, Donna. Good question. I don't know the answer to that.
So does anybody have objection with Mike moving forward with something?
I have objection, objection to the whole thing, but I, I guess it needs to have, we need to have something in place, so I'll go with that.
And then once an ordinance is created, we would have public hearings and everything else. So we would, we would get public input.
This is just starting the process.
Or you would get public input down the road.
This is just starting the process. So hearing no objections, we're just gonna go with that? Okay. Last one, discussion and possible vote to adopt resolution number 2022-0013, green economy bonds. So.
Vote for that one, sorry.
Oh, no. No, we just directed Mike to do it. There was no need.
Just take it to him.
Okay. So Jay made a motion to do it. Do I have a second? It's the last one, the last item.
Second.
Second by Deb. This is the recreational marijuana smoking, vaping, to have him do an ordinance. All those in favor?
I object to recreational. The word.
It passed. So actually, Michael's approached to see if we would put this on the agenda. And I said I would. So this is the green economy bonds that are on the state ballot for November.
8th.
8th, thank you. It's probably on here. And it involves, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but it involves $50 million in capital infusion for the infrastructure bank, small business energy loan program, Narragansett Bay watershed restoration, forest restoration, brownfield remediation, open space and recreational land acquisition, and Roger Williams Park and Zoo. Town of, so it talks about how in the town of Tiverton, over the last 10 years, we've been the recipient of four grants totaling just over $1 million. The funds helped in the construction, rehabilitation, restoration, and preservation of sites such as Fogland and Grinnell's Beach, town farm recreational air it fields, and the Pecasset-Pocanocket Land Trust property. Also, if I could be wrong, and I don't know that anybody's left from the trust in the room, some of this goes to open space and recreational land use that DEM controls and grants out. So the big piece of land, as you turn right to go to Fogland on Pond Bridge Road, the more property there, that's under a conservation easement. It was a combination of funds from the town, funds from the land trust, funds from DEM, other sources, that put that into conservation. A lot of the Pecasset Ridge has come out of that open space and recreational land acquisition. And those are just a couple of examples. Certainly, I think we all want to make sure that Narragansett Space stays clean and gets cleaner, and, and same with our forests, and especially on our lower lying areas. It will hopefully help with any climate change impact from tides being higher and the like. And so this is us, whether or not we want to support that bond issue.
So where's the money coming from? Is it, this is debt?
It's a state bond.
It's a state. It's on.
$50 million in debt?
It's on the, it's on the ballot.
I know.
So you, can you explain the process?
Sure. So if the voters approve it, it becomes a general obligation of the, of the state.
And what is that per year to spend, to send, to pay it back? Do you know?
I have no idea.
With the interest?
Sure, it's a 30-year bond.
With all the other bonds we're paying, right?
I think it's, all that information, I think, is that the voter handbook that went out to the, to the voters.
All this debt.
So.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of opportunities for Tiverton.
Well, we've gotten our share.
It's debt. It's a lot of debt. And we have a lot of debt.
And I understand your opposition to debt, Donna. I, I do. I also know that part of what our, you know, everybody speaks about the comprehensive plan. The way we help keep to the comprehensive plan is by being able to utilize funds from other sources to put things in conservation easement or permanent open space and the like. Susan came up and talked about the Hicks House. There's a whole piece of property down there that people want to be conserved, but we don't have the money to conserve. So if we, if we, or a developer will buy it and it become, I don't know what. So we can either have, I don't know what, or we can find ways to preserve. But you don't have to hope for this either. So this is put before us. If there's a motion to approve it, there is. If there's not, then it dies.
I'll make the motion.
Jay makes motion to support, adopt the resolution to support the green economy bonds.
Second.
Second by Bill. Any further discussion?
I think we have, I think we have great opportunities for our town with this.
Someone's gotta pay it back.
Well, everybody in the state will be paying it back instead of just the 16,000 Tiverton residents.
You do what you wanna do.
Okay. All those in favor? And those opposed? Thank you. And now we are moving into executive session under Administrator Cotta, RIGL 42465A2, elective bargaining update on Teamsters Local 251 and ASME Local 2670A negotiations. B, obviously Denise is not here, but so for me, RIGL 42465A1, personnel, job performance, annual valuation for town administrator Christopher Cotta notice given. And C, Solicitor Marcello, RIGL 42465A2, litigation, general update on Rhode Island inter-local trust litigation. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session under those?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Deb? I'll get it. Bill?
Whatever.
Donna?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jay?